Good evening. I'm calling the meeting of February 19th to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible).
Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Erwin.
Present.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fox.
Here.
Mayor Bill De La Penya.
Present. Thank you. Do we have any requests for continuance of any public hearing or agenda item? None, thank you. Tonight, we do not have any special presentations, so we will go straight to public comments. Madam Clerk?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or in a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the Council as a whole, and all documents for City Council and the official record should be presented to the City Clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the Council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the City Manager for administrative follow-up. Five people have presented cards, and pursuant to Council standard, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. And our first public speaker is Police Chief Randy Pentis. Good evening, and welcome back to Thousand Oaks.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Council. I want to give you an update on what's occurred since January regarding our community and burglaries, primarily residential burglaries. Since the first of the year, we've had 37. We saw many of those in the northern end of Thousand Oaks and in the Newbury Park area. So we started an aggressive investigation enforcement campaign, and we also started an education prevention campaign. We put out signs, we put it out on Twitter, we put it on our website. We also had volunteers pass out flyers to the residents, because we found that this number of 37, most of them, the burglars entered through an unlocked door. Unlocked window, sliding glass door, doggy door, leaving a garage door open during the night. And we saturated the area with plainclothes officers, black and whites. We looked at people who were recently released from jail, were in the community on parole for burglary. We made two arrests in the northern end of Thousand Oaks, and after our education campaign and the investigation, we haven't had any since there. In Newbury Park, on Sunday morning, a resident was awoken at almost 10 to 5:00 in the morning, and it was a hot prowl. Suspects left their home, and as they ran out, the police were called. We responded. We stopped one of the burglars on a bicycle. The bicycle was stolen from one of the homes on that street in Newbury Park. We also found a stolen vehicle that was stolen out of Oxnard, and we also discovered that the two other burglars stole a Mercedes. They were stopped in Oxnard and arrested. So we had three in custody, we recovered some property, but out of this three from Sunday, and after an investigation all day Sunday, they were responsible for 10 burglaries in the Newbury Park area. My point is, the most of these burglars went to homes where the homes were unlocked or a garage door was open. Our officers see it at night, where there's bicycles, surfboards, their cars are in the garage, or their homes are just simply not locked. We live in a very, very safe community, but we have criminals from within, we've got criminals that come from other areas, and it's a crime of opportunity. And I'll take any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions of the police chief? Councilmember Jill Price.
Not really questions. Just want to commend the Ventura County Sheriff's Office for getting out there quickly and recognizing somebody who appeared not to belong in the area at that hour of the night, anyway, or morning, and the subsequent relentless follow-up that resulted in these arrests and the ultimate recovery of some property, I understand. So, kudos. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fox.
Yeah, Chief, I was just sitting here wondering, and I think maybe a lot of folks in the public that may be viewing tonight's meeting may ask themselves, what would be the recommendation of the Sheriff's Department if, in fact, you find yourself with what you characterize as a hot prowl? Your home, you're there with your family, and you know someone's in your house. What's the Sheriff's Department's recommendation, short of calling 911, obviously, but...
Go to a safe place in your home. That's why every... that's a very good question. Every family, whether it's a natural disaster or criminal activity, should have a family plan, an emergency plan. And in a case where someone's in your home, go to a safe place in your home with the entire family, and secure yourself. Obviously, after you've called 911, as you've mentioned, go to a safe place in your home and stay there until we arrive.
So can I just follow that up a little bit? Normally, you know, four-bedroom home, the kids are sleeping in separate rooms. I know, if it's me, I'm going to get my kids, even the teenagers. Is it you... In most cases, if you make enough noise, the guy's going to leave because he doesn't want to engage somebody, or you... Obviously, you don't want them to... You don't want us to engage the prowler because he could have a weapon.
Anytime that these have occurred in our city, and many of them, I should add, have occurred during the day, where they call the house to see if anyone's home, and then they gain access where it's an unlocked portion of the house. When they hear anybody or see anybody, they... In most cases, they have fled. In the early morning hours, if they hear something, they have fled, just like what happened with this resident. There's not an absolute with this. By and large, you should find a safe place in your home and stay there. There may be an opportunity for you to leave, if that's the case, depending on your home, the layout of your home, your yard, what you see and hear at that particular moment. But by and large, you find a safe place in your home. You know your home. The intruder does not. If they hear something, they will probably flee.
Okay. Very good. Good work, obviously. Great job.
Thank you very much for the information, Chief, as well as the advice to all of the residents in Thousand Oaks. As you said, Thousand Oaks is one of the safest cities, but it doesn't make us crime-free. Thank you. Our second speaker is Anthony Gringieri, followed by Gaston Mona and Craig Underwood.
I'm Anthony Gringieri from 5012 Reed Road here in Thousand Oaks, and we wanted to talk about the SCE substation that's planned for that area and the power lines that are coming down our street. Some of these power lines, according to the plan, are going to be within about 20 feet of some of the second-story bedroom windows of homes along Reed Road. And given the fact that electrical demand in our area is going down, as Gaston will show you in a minute, we are opposed, in general, to the industrialization of that area around the Tierra Rahada Valley. As an alternative, if this is going to go through, we would like to propose that the power lines be put underground rather than above ground. The city has shown... has established at least some precedent for that with the placing of power lines underground along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, which, obviously, is a commercial street, and we're talking about a residential area. And most importantly, we'd like to oppose any progress on this project until the final environmental impact assessment has been filed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Mona, followed by Craig Underwood, and then Karen Bonnsole.
My name is Gaston Mona. I live on Reed Road in Thousand Oaks, and I want to take this opportunity to thank the City of Thousand Oaks and the Council.
Mr. Mona, could you please speak into the microphone? Thank you.
To thank the Council and the city people who have helped us in the last year or so against the project from Southern California Edison, which is called the Presidential Substation on Olson. They want to put a high-tension line all the way from Moore Park to Olson, and now it's been denied by the CPUC, and it's been taken out of that project. Now, if you can see on the page that I've issued you, the red line is actually the demand of electricity in the last several years that keeps going down. If we look at the green line, the green line is the projected demand by Southern California Edison. Obviously, they're not matching, and the top line is where they think that eventually in 10 years it's going to go. So the demand keeps going down, and they have... they're projecting 450 megavolt of demand, and right now, it's down to less than 300, approximately 280, and it keeps going down. So we don't see any need for that project. The CPUC has agreed. They've had the Southern California Edison take it out of their last demand, and as a matter of fact, they've refused the project. But we know Southern California Edison, and they will try again to put that project through. There's no need for that. I mean, Amgen and Baxter, who are the two biggest users of electricity in Thousand Oaks, Amgen has its own station, and Baxter can use the Protegero. That's where they use right now, and that Protegero station is eligible for improvement. So there's no need, really, because that line, the presidential project, is just going to wind up on Olson between Thousand Oaks and Simi Valley with nowhere to go, with the hope that Southern California Edison will eventually use it. They're suggesting that there will be a 10% increase of electricity, yet we're only going... growing by 3% a year. And there, the man keeps going down, so there is really no need for that project. So we would like to have the Council, again, help us defeat that Southern California Edison substation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mona. Next speaker, Craig Underwood, followed by Karen Bonnsole and Georgette McBreen.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, my name's Craig Underwood. I reside in Camarillo, and our farm is bordered by Sunset Valley Road and Reed Road, along which the proposed power lines will go that would service this substation. We're very concerned about the impacts, not only on our farm, but the valley in general. And there's some statistics here that Chuck Cronin put together. Not my research, but he's done a very good job. The Presidential Substation was proposed in 2008, and Southern California Edison projected that Thousand Oaks and Simi Valley areas would be put out of power in 2012. SCE projected 409 megavolts in 2012, which turned out to be only 284, a miss of 40%. Most of this decline is due to energy efficiency actions by city businesses and residents. An example is the solar city facilities, such as Hill Canyon Waste Treatment Plant and the solar on Old City Hall. In addition to the city's actions, consumers have saved 6% of demand with energy efficiency upgrades, per Southern California Edison records. In addition, there's been 4 megavolts of solar online, and another 4 megavolts is expected. These past actions create a permanent decline in peak demand that is ignored by Southern California Edison projections. They now project the power will increase by 60% in 10 years despite declines in demand of 10% since 2008. General plant growth is less than 3%. We ask that the City Council and staff continue to work with its citizens to determine the true need for the substation, and more importantly, other alternatives, such as commercial rooftop solar and other programs. There are many alternatives that can be explored, and the continued support of the City Council and the staff is much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. The next speaker is Karen Bonnsole and Georgette McBreen, followed by Mercedes Todesco.
Good evening. My name is Karen Bonnsole, and I'm the Director of Community Engagement and Development at New West Symphony, based here in the Civic Arts Plaza. I just wanted to come this evening to say thank you so much to all of you for supporting our January concert, which was actually our highest ticket sales concert that we've had in the history of the organization, which is not only a success for our group, but I think also for the arts community here in Thousand Oaks. We'd like to extend an invitation to you for our upcoming concert, which is this Saturday here in Cavali Theatre at 8:00 PM. It's Beethoven's Eroica, featuring Rachel Pine, who is a world-class, well-known artist flying in from Chicago this evening. Please visit our website at newwestsymphony.org for more information. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Oh, Mrs. Bonnsole, did you want to announce the "Meet the Artist" on Thursday that is happening?
Sure, thank you so much. We do have a "Meet the Artist" program this Thursday morning, right here in this shroom forum, and the idea there is to present the artists in a behind-the-scenes experience so that you can learn about the program that will be occurring over the weekend, which is a pretty unique opportunity. And again, we thank you for that experience that we have here with your support.
The City Manager informs me it's taking place at 10 o'clock in the morning, and it is absolutely free. Thank you very much. All right. Georgette McBreen, followed by Mercedes and Marco Todesco.
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Georgette McBreen. I'm a local teacher and a resident of Moore Park, and I am here tonight, too, to express my deep concern regarding the proposed placements of high-voltage power lines along Sunset Valley and Reed Road in Moore Park. I have a lot of reasons for this, but the number-one reason is Underwood Family Farms, which is on Sunset Valley Road, serves thousands of families, providing agricultural, educational experiences for our children. As a teacher, I know that the most meaningful learning comes when it's experienced firsthand, and that is what the children who come to Underwood Family Farms experience. Whether it's petting baby goats, or looking at real peacocks, or seeing newborn baby piglets, or live turkeys, as well as picking berries and vegetables, provides a far more valuable experience than looking on a computer, a book, or TV. For 12 years, I've brought my classes to the farm at least twice a year to pick pumpkins in the fall and strawberries in the spring, and I'm one of hundreds of teachers who do this. I've met many local teachers and groups, but many who also travel here from places such as West LA, San Fernando Valley, and on any given day during spring or fall, there are an upward of 2,000 people, including school field trips and families visiting the farm. And with 5,000 to 6,000 annual membership passes, these large numbers prove the fact that this farm is a magical place of experiential learning and fun that's to be protected and treasured as a huge asset to our community. Why am I telling you all this? Well, I can't help but think that if this was a school, no one would ever consider placing high-voltage power lines of this size down two sides of the property in such close proximity to such large numbers of children. High-voltage power lines are not run along school property lines for good reason. No one wants to take risks with the future health and safety of children. But I must say that this farm offers education every bit as important as a school, and Underwood serves far more children in total than a school does. The health risk attributed to such close exposure is unknown, and no one knows, and no one should knowingly take such high risks with children. So you must see how placement of these high-voltage power lines right at the farm will jeopardize a very valuable community asset and possibly place many children in a health and safety risk situation. Also, these high-power lines are very unsightly. Why in the world would they put unsightly monstrosities right down the middle of Tierra Rahada Valley? And it's also, as was said before, it's not factually been proven that there is need for power that will continue to grow. If anything, the growth has slowed down. I'm out of time already. One more little thing. If this project moves forward, these lines should be placed underground, like what has been proposed near Reagan Library and along T.O. Boulevard. And better yet, they could expand the power site that already exists in Moore Park. Best of all, this project needs to be stopped altogether. And except for writing letters and speaking at meetings and hearings, we have no vote. We have no say in our future. So I'm here tonight to ask you, the City Council members, to help us in our opposition to this plan proposed by Southern California Edison.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mercedes Todesco, followed by Marco Todesco.
Good evening. Thank you, City Council members. My name is Mercedes Todesco, and our... with respect to the Edison Presidential Substation project, our family home is on the line of the transmission towers where they would go along Reed Road. It's known as the Blue House. And I'm here to ask you to keep our concerns about the project a priority, as you have done. Please continue to do so. The towers would be within 20 feet of our second-story bedrooms among other homes along Reed Road, and this is alarming for us. The Tierra Rahada Valley is important to all the residents of Thousand Oaks, Simi Valley, and Moore Park, along with... It's a concern also for the National Park Service, Ventura County, Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy, along with other organizations. Tierra Rahada Valley is a scenic corridor for everyone passing through it, and the industrialization of Tierra Rahada Valley that this project would cause is of great concern, especially given the declining power demand in the area, as people have mentioned. The city has a very respectable, well-earned reputation to be a leader in the efforts to get any high-voltage transmission lines underground, and we appreciate Mr. Mitnick's cooperation with the other cities on the request for undergrounding, if it's built at all. For example, someone mentioned that the city recently approved the project to underground transmission lines along Thousand Oaks Boulevard between Duesenberg and Via Colinas. If the city is going to pay $13 million to underground along a commercial street, it should also support the undergrounding along a residential street to protect the scenic beauty that Thousand Oaks is so popular for. In that same spirit, we ask that the City Council and manager continue to oppose the project, and at minimum exert influence and request the project be undergrounded as we approach the final environmental impact report stage. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last public speaker is Marco Todesco.
Thank you for having us and taking this time for us to speak to you about the concerns that we have of the things coming up. I ditto everything everybody was saying about the Presidential Substation project, and all I want to say is to ask you to continue the work you have been doing with the other cities, Simi Valley and Moore Park, to require... First of all, there's a preliminary environmental impact report, said there is an environmentally superior alternative, which they can just upgrade their existing facilities without doing any of this extreme work and costs that they're just going to pass on to us anyway. So there's been proven no need for it as yet. If the need is proven that it has to be done, I do ask that you work as diligently and as hard as you can to see that everything is underground, because like my sister before me was saying, our house, which my family built and owns at 4964 Reed Road, which may be referred to as the Blue House, and you'll see it in pictures, is estimated to be within 20 feet of these extremely powerful power lines. And I also had heard that there might even be some problems with the easement, and that their project would be extending beyond the easement boundaries. So I simply ask you and urge you to do everything you can to either require them to stay within the environmentally superior alternative, which is to simply upgrade their existing facilities, or to underground the entire project. Thank you.
Thank you. And for everybody who's here regarding the Presidential Substation, our City Manager, Mr. Scott Mitnick, will address those concerns right now.
Madam Mayor, members of the Council, I'm going to turn it over to our Community Development Director, John Prescott, but just to be clear upfront, the concerns that you heard articulated tonight, the city has been sharing those with the CPUC, the California Public Utilities Commission, and Edison. So your concerns have been clearly communicated, and the city has taken a position supporting those concerns. And also, before Mr. Prescott gives you the up-to-the-moment on this situation, Council, I'm going to be meeting with Rudy Gonzalez, our regional representative for this area. We're going to be talking about other Edison issues, but I'll be sure to raise this one as well. So if it's okay with the mayor, we'll have John Prescott just give an update and make sure the attorney's comfortable.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, certainly. The city has the same concerns as the residents you've heard from, and has voiced those on numerous occasions with the California Public Utilities Commission, which has jurisdiction over the project. Presently, the status is that the CPUC is preparing the final environmental impact report. The draft EIR came out quite a while ago, and it did identify the upgrades to existing stations as an alternative, and we have asked for a more thorough description of those and the evaluation of their actual feasibility to do rather than building a new substation. We've been advised by CPUC that the final EIR will be out probably next month or early April, I believe it was, and then that document will be used by the commission as a whole in making their decision on Edison's application. So it'll be interesting to see what that says, and we will... As soon as we get that document, we'll share it with Council, and I'm sure the public will get it right away, too, and proceed in accordance with it. But it's definitely our view that it is a feasible option, and it should be thoroughly studied to upgrade existing stations rather than build a new substation.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Mr. Mitnick?
Also, for the residents and council members and other interested parties, we'll be sure to have this on our website. If it's not already there, we'll move it to a more user-friendly portion of the website so you can check on the status of that. And for our two new council members, so because of a question that was asked here, Reed Road is the boundary, city limit line. So on one side of Reed Road, where these folks live, is the city of Thousand Oaks, I believe, north... I don't know if it's west. And then on the other side is the county. So that is the city boundary there, just for clarity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. And we now move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items that anybody wishes to pull? Mr. Adam?
I don't have an item, but I have a comment.
Okay. I would like to pull Item 7C, and you have a comment regarding any particular item on the consent calendar?
No.
No, just in general? Okay. It doesn't appear that we have any speakers for the consent calendar, and so before we vote, why don't you go ahead, Mr. Adam?
Okay. The consent calendar this evening has hundreds of thousands of dollars of business potential with different vendors that do business with the city. And what I noticed as a common thread throughout the consent calendar is none of these businesses are located in Thousand Oaks. There's seven engineering firms with these on-call agreements, Camarillo, Irvine, Los Angeles, Arcadia, Rockland, Irvine, and Corvallis, Oregon. There's two engineering firms for Old Town out of Santa Barbara and Valencia, and there's four firms for the door and door hardware equipment that we would need, two from Ventura, one from Garen Grove, and one from Oxnard. So my question is, are local companies responding to our requests for proposals? Are they not getting within the 5% of the lowest bid rule that we've installed to try to encourage doing business? to try to encourage doing business with, here locally? Maybe Mr. Mitnick can answer that question.
Go ahead, Mr. Mitnick. Can you? Okay.
Can you?
I can dance on the floor, too. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'd be happy to, if you have specific questions about specific agenda items or projects, we have to do that. But in general, all, and we have our chamber president, CEO, and we've talked with her about this on a number of occasions over the years. On all these services, local firms are strongly encouraged to submit proposals. And we do outreach, we've worked with the chamber, we've, this issue's come up over the years with the auto dealers when it comes time to purchasing automobiles and trucks and other rolling stock. And sometimes the local companies will bid and sometimes they don't. We do our best to make them aware. Typically, what we'll do on these specific items is we'll delineate who the bidders were, depending on the type of bidding. And sometimes you'll see a Thousand Oaks firm, sometimes you don't. And we're trying to balance the desire to help local business with also protecting the local taxpayer dollars to make sure we get the, the best bang for the buck, so to speak, because it is taxpayer money that we're spending. So if there are specifics, um, and I'd be happy to talk with the council member offline about certain line items here and we'll, we'll try to explain a little bit better about why it worked there. But it is, it is a balancing act. And we do have local Thousand Oaks businesses that bid on other contracts in other cities. So I hope that helps.
Just to follow, are we doing anything to outreach to the local businesses to let them know that this business is available for them? Or?
Uh, we, we, uh, yes, we've done this before. This issue does get raised on a frequent basis and we try our best through the Chamber of Commerce and other groups like the Boulevard Association and that type of thing. So we, we, we do our best to make the bidders aware. Oftentimes, local businesses don't want to deal, well, don't like to bid with governmental agencies because it's, it's so competitive. The profit margins are smaller.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. I think we do have a staff member, Mr. Spurgeon, Public Works Director, Jay Spurgeon, who would like to chime in.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. And Councilmember Adam, good question here. Regarding the several on-call consultants, I can tell you that two of them have local offices in Thousand Oaks, Corolo and CH Two-Mill. What you're seeing is, is there corporate offices in terms of, of reporting where they're from. We could do a better job of, of providing that additional information that they have local offices. But that process of, of selecting those consultants was, was wide open. And so any other firms that do have local offices in Thousand Oaks were, were free to, to submit statements of qualifications for those kind of services. The contractor for the Old Town West, for instance, was a, an open competitive bid through the state public contracts code process. And, and we, you know, we're bound to award to the lowest responsible bidder for that and that, in this case, was, was from Valencia. So, but certainly, local contractors are made aware of that through, through our outreach and, and the posting of bids. They have, they have the opportunity to bid and, and they often do.
It's good to know, Mr. Spurgeon. At least there's a couple of companies here that weren't readily apparent. I would just encourage you in the future to be as aggressive as possible to recruiting our local companies to do business with the city. Thanks.
Um, I would like to, I do have a question as a follow-up. I know we made some progress with having the Auto Mall submit bids and actually the city accepting the local bids because we changed the preference formula. And is that the same formula that we apply to all of these other contractors?
Uh, for public works construction, we are not able to provide a local preference. Uh, we're bound by the state public contracts code there and it, and it is, we're bound to the lowest responsible bid on those. The engineering services are qualifications-based selection. And so, uh, we do consider location when we, when we rank those, those kind of firms. But in terms of using monetary, you know, local preference there, we actually do not award those kind of contracts based on a fee. It's qualifications-based.
Can any weight be given to the local consideration? Percentage-wise, any points or so, or not at all?
Uh, yes, we can and we do.
Okay. Very good. Are there any additional questions regarding this issue? None? All right. Um, we go to item 7C and that would be Mr. Our, our cultural affairs director, Mr. Barry McCombe.
Yes, ma'am.
And the question that I have basically is how this proposal to change the, the makeup of our committee will benefit the city and the theaters?
Well, it actually will benefit the city and the theaters because it will allow the members of the commission to have more voices involved in the various points of operation of the theater and our programming. Currently, the Operations and Programming Committee and the Civic Arts Plaza Foundation are comprised of the same committee members. So what the commission's opted to do to allow more members of the commission to have a voice in the operation of the theater is to take those two distinct, distinctly different committees and to split them. So the foundation committee actually has oversight over the programming that we present on an in-house basis. So when we're presenting a show, that actually runs through our foundation. And the Operations and Programming Committee will focus on the theater operations, policies, uh, you know, recommendations for future changes when it comes to, to rates, the fiscal structure recommendations that they'd like to see us focused on and even more so, marketing.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. All right. Do I have anyone moving the, to approve staff recommendations for the consent calendar? Councilmember Irwin?
I move the consent calendar.
Thank you. Any comments? Please vote.
I need a name tag.
The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have our first public hearing. And that is item nine, 8A, abandonment of Brunson Court Right-of-Way Residential Plan Development. Madam Clerk?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 8A, abandonment of Brunson Court Right-of-Way Residential Plan Development Permit Minor Modification RPMN 12-70534. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. And all documents for the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. And speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. We have one person who has presented a speaker card and that speaker will be allowed five minutes.
Thank you. And this particular case will be presented by Senior Engineer Nader Haddari. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Nader Haddari, Senior Engineer in Public Works Department. I will be presenting item 8A from the applicant Viceroy Trust. And the applicant's representatives are here tonight and may wish to speak as well. The request before you is to consider the vacation and abandonment of the city's right-of-way on Brunson Court east of Westlake Boulevard. Here's an aerial photo of the property in question. Again, it's the portion of Brunson Court that would be easterly of Wesack Boulevard to the right on this photo. Brunson Court east of Wesack Boulevard was constructed in 1988 and it serves three properties as part of tract 4023. The public right-of-way in tract 4023 was granted to the city in the form of an easement, meaning that we do not own the underlying roadway and system there. We instead have an easement for our roadway access and utility maintenance. And as we could go along the progression of this timeline, in April of last year, the applicant's representatives submitted the request and staff received their formal request for the abandonment of Brunson Court with the owner desiring to convert the public right-of-way into a private driveway. All three parcels are now held in common ownership by the single property owner. In December of 2012, just two months ago, the planning commission considered this case. The government code requires a planning agency to make findings of general plan consistency. And they did make that finding in a five to nothing vote. In January of, in your January 22nd city council meeting last month, you approved a resolution to authorize the initiation of this proceeding, which initiated some public notices and outreach to be done. Here's a view of Brunson east of Wesack Boulevard, looking from Wesack Boulevard toward the subject's street at its intersection. Some of the items for evaluation of this request, again, the, the street was, is not on the circulation element. It was determined and found by the planning commission to be consistent with the general plan. It's a short cul-de-sac, about 550 feet long, only serves three properties, which, again, all of which are owned by the applicant. The street does not provide any access to public trails or public property. Another factor is that it will provide a reduction in the city's operating and maintenance future outlay in terms of street lighting and roadway maintenance. The city has obtained already a, a public utility easement that would replace and basically encompass the entire roadway to allow for continuing public utilities and infrastructure maintenance to continue forward should the council approve the abandonment. And all physical modifications that would be constructed at a later date will be processed through the normal process through the, and ensure that they meet all the requirements of public works and community development as well as the fire department. The right-of-way, again, should council approve the abandonment, would revert back to the underlying property owners, which is the three parcels there. And in addition to the typical public notices that are required of a project of this nature, staff contacted the fire department, police department, and all public utility agencies and received no objections from any of them. We also received no comments during the public noticing process. One more item to note is similar abandonments have been processed in the past by the city for Hillcrest Drive just east of Wesack Boulevard, which is just a few miles from this property, and on Silas Avenue more recently in Newbury Park. The recommendation is to adopt the resolution abandoning Brunson Court's right-of-way east of Wesack Boulevard for roadway purposes. And staff is available if you have any questions.
Are there any questions? Mrs. Irwin?
Thank you, Mr. Haddari. Who paid for the street originally? The city or the owners?
The original developer who constructed the tract in 1988.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Haddari, the only question that I have is these three parcels are now owned by the same person or, yeah, persons. Do, should, have there been any lot line adjustments or is this all still three different parcels?
It's, it's continuing to maintain as three separate and distinct parcels.
And if, in the future, if he or she ever wanted to sell those off, instead of selling them off as a whole compound rather than, if, if they want to sell them off individually, how would that impact this abandonment and impact that?
Well, one mechanism we're going to ensure that also gets filed and recorded is a private covenant agreement between the three properties that although you're right, right now, it's kind of, doesn't seem essential because it's one property owner, but it will still bind all three properties to the maintenance and access of obligations of this street so that that is already in place. If one of the parcels is sold, that there will not be a kind of a conflict situation over maintenance of the street.
Thank you. And we do have one person regarding this case, Mr. Mark Sellers, here for the property owner.
Good evening. Mark Sellers with Jackson &amp; Markel Law Firm for the applicant and the property owner. I just want to say, I can't think of a better situation for a vacation of a public street. Uh, we've gone through the, the facts around the situation of being owned by one owner. It's a very short cul-de-sac. And I think this is a situation where it takes a burden of maintenance off the city, puts it on the private property owner, and also it takes a liability exposure away from the city because this will be a gated private street. What will ultimately occur is very similar to what we have with any gated community in this city, where you have gates, you have private streets, you have assessments. And it's that kind of private street covenant that will be recorded that will share the cost of maintaining that street, will have easement rights to the various three property owners who now are only one property owner. But if they ever in the future want to sell or convey any of those properties separately, those properties will have this obligation to maintain the street as a private street and actually pay for the gate and have the, the various provisions that you find in CCNRs for any gated community. With that, I can answer any questions, but I think this is a perfect situation for vacating the public street.
I don't think there are any questions from the council members. Thank you very much, Mr. Sellers. And I will refer it back to staff for any comments, additional comments?
No further comments.
Before I close the public hearing? None? Okay, then the public hearing is closed and I open it up for discussion and/or motion. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to move the staff recommendation for the adoption of the resolution for abandoning Brunson Court Right-of-Way for the roadway purposes east of Wesack Boulevard.
Thank you. Are there any comments to the motion? None? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Now, item 8B, which is another public hearing. This is a residential plan development. Madam Clerk?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 8B, Appeal of the Planning Commission Decision on Modification of New Home Company Residential Project Relating to Grading Conditions of Approval. Tentative Trap, Track Map Major Modification TTMJ 2012-70230. Residential Plan Development Permit Major Modification RPMJ 2012-70160. Oak Tree Permit OTP 2012-70231. The applicant and appellant is the New Home Company. It's located the west side of Warwick Avenue at Mayflower Street. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. We have five speaker cards. The applicant-appellant is allowed 15 minutes with a five-minute rebuttal and the remaining speakers are allowed five minutes each.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And for the record, we have had four council members who met with the applicant regarding this project. The information is in the supplemental packet. All right. Mrs. Claudia Pedros, Pedrosso, Senior Planner, will do the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Major and members of the council. The request in front of you is for consider an appeal of the Planning Commission decision for the New Home Company project located at Warwick Avenue and Mayflower Street. The appeal is to approve starting grading conditions that included additional fill onto the CRPD property and also increase the pad elevation of three home sites. This area picture shows you the location of the project, which is outlined in red. And, um, basically it shows also the streets in the surrounding area. And also, what I wanted to point out is the, uh, part of the land on the northern part of the project, which is the CRPD property where the proposed fill is going to be, the applicant is proposing the additional fill. This picture shows you the view from Warwick Avenue at the gate, looking up towards the southwest. And far back in the distance, uh, it shows the area where the proposed fill is going to happen. And this is also just more further down, uh, next to the residential properties on the north side. That's where you see the trees. Over on the other side, you have the houses. And also it shows the existing drainage ditch. And this picture over here shows you the view from the future home sites. And right in front of it and below is a part of the area that is proposed to be filled with the export dirt. And that's a part of the CRPD property. This shows you a timeline of the project. Basically, the, the, the project was approved, the 20 homes were approved in, in 2004. The additional grading, additional grading was approved in 2006 and then in 2012, the planning commission approving part the project. And this over here shows you basically the lot layout, which includes the 20 home sites. It also shows you the street coming off Warwick Avenue to have access to the houses. Uh, shows you also the additional open space in HOA properties, lots. And in addition to that, it shows you, this is the project boundary. And to this north over here shows the area of CRPD property where the fill is going to be put onto. And this is more of a close-up view of those 20 homes, the lots. And again, it, this kind of shows you where they're proposing to have additional grading. Lot 18 and 20 and number, and Lot 1 are the lots that are being proposed to be, have the pad elevations raised, basically by about one foot or two feet. raised, basically by about one foot or two feet, and the reason for the paths being raised has to do with to accommodate the additional fill. The reason why staff was not supportive of that is because these lots are on the perimeter of the project. The lots 18 and 20 are on the northern end, on the ridge line of the project, and will be visible from the neighbors and also from some of the public streets, as well as the one on Warwick Avenue. It will be substantially higher from Warwick Avenue. This picture over here, it shows you kind of where the deepest fill is going to happen, and also it kind of gives you an idea of the ridge line where those two lots, 18 and 20, will be, and the reason why we figured that the visual impact may be not favorable. And probably one of the key issues or factors on this project is the additional grading that the applicant is proposing onto the CRPD property, meaning the fill. The original project, the additional grading that was approved in 2006, basically came out to about the same cubic yards as what the applicant is proposing now. However, the biggest difference is that the approval in 2006 had half of it being kept on site and half of it being, sorry, half of it would be like filled on CRPD property, and the other half was going to be trucked away. Where this project, this proposal includes basically all of the fill being on CRPD property and just very minimum export that will be trucked away. And this is mainly the, one of the bigger issues that had to do with this appeal. And to illustrate that, hopefully you can see this, but basically there's a plan that shows the approval, the grading approval and extents that were from 2006, and also what the applicant is proposing. And basically, the yellow below is what the applicant is proposing to do, and the green on top, the green hatch area, shows the area that was originally approved. So basically, what it shows to the north is an additional berm area, and also to the west, we see the additional grading that goes beyond the grading extents that were And this picture kind of shows you what the berm is being proposed. Basically, the houses are on the north side over here, and this is where they're locating that berm. This slide, it may be a little bit hard for you to see, but we have, the next slide kind of shows a little bit more detail, but this is the cross-section of what the applicant is proposing versus what was approved before and what the existing grade is. So if I can get your attention to the lower section, section CC, if you can see, I'm going to try to take my cursor around, if you can see the dotted line, that's the existing grade right now, as it is on the project. The blue line that you see here is what was previously approved. And that one at the deepest area, the deepest height was about a 14-foot fill. The green line is what the applicant is proposing to do. And at the highest point, the additional fill is an additional 17 feet over the 14 that were already approved for a total of 31 feet. So it is definitely substantial change from what was approved before. The other section AA kind of also shows you again, the dotted line is the existing line, the blue line is what was approved, and the green line is what is proposed. And section AA also shows you the berm in relationship to the existing houses, you know, the one with that is at the section. So you can see that between the trees and the berm, you know, there's a lower area, so it should create some privacy because they're also providing a trail that was already conditioned to have done in the past, and so you have the trail over here, then you have a drainage ditch, and then you go up to connect to the existing pad elevation. And then this is, this detailed section that I was telling you that hopefully will help you see a little bit more. Again, the dotted line is the existing grade, the blue line is the previously approved grading plan, and then the green one is the existing one. And the difference between the existing grade and then proposed grade is 31 feet, and again, the prior approval had 14 feet at the maximum height. On this slide, we show you, if you can see the shaded area, and the screen shows a little bit kind of beige color, but in the, it may just show as shaded, that's the existing 25% natural grade. Now, the existing, I mean, the current approval already had most of this 25% grade approved as part of that grading, but the additional, there's additional .13 acres of 25% grade that's basically happening around the west end of the property and on the north end of the property that were not approved before. The Planning Commission basically approved most of the requests from the applicant, including the lot line adjustments, the house plottings, some of the modified pad elevations, as well as a couple of manufacturer slopes that were more than 25 feet. But the main fact, the main item that they did not approve, they did not approve the additional fill to CRPD property, which in effect also disallowed the additional manufacturer slope height, because the manufacturer slope went from 60 feet to 72 feet. It also disallowed the additional grading extends area, as well as the additional encroachment on the 25% grade, and also the additional encroachment on, or the encroachment, I should say, onto the, within the oak tree, protected zone of the oak trees. The following two slides depict the benefits that the appellant is suggesting their design provides, including the reduction of truck trips and grading time, and also they're requesting for the conditions of an attachment part five to be approved. And also, in the second part of the statement, it also lists that some of the improvements that they will be building as part of the project, however, these items were, had already been required of the prior approval in 2004. So whoever takes on the project will be, will have to provide these improvements as So again, you know, like, I think I skipped one slide, sorry about that, but basically what I was saying is some of these items were already required of the approval in And staff considered the appellant's statements, and we do recognize that the reduction, the substantial reduction of truck trips is a big benefit, and also that the grading time is going to be reduced at a certain point, considering the fact that they don't have to do the additional truck trips. We do feel that the long-term impacts on, the visual impacts on the modified hillside are greater than the actual short-term benefit of the reduced truck trips and also the reduced time of grading. Also, we should mention that more importantly is the fact that this proposal is requiring an additional deviation from the general plan policies and grading ordinance. You know, the project had already been provided with 25% encroachment, manufacturer slopes higher than 25 feet, and additional, and a substantial amount of fill, and this is going in addition to and beyond what was already approved in the past. And also, like I mentioned before, the 2004 approval already required for these items to be included, and also the 2004 approval and included 2006 approval did not impact, had any impacts on the oak trees. And in regards to the oak trees, like I mentioned, the 2004, 2006 approvals did not have any encroachment onto the oak, so there was no oak tree permit required. So therefore, if the council were to approve this appeal, then they have to also approve an oak tree permit application, which the conditions are included with the conditions in your packet. In conclusion, the staff recommendation is to uphold the Planning Commission's decision and to deny the appeal. However, if the council decides to grant the appeal, then the applications listed on the slide will have to be approved, the RPD, the track map, and the oak tree permit, and also, because, excuse me, for the conditions, they are included in the attachment number five, which is called conditions number two. And with us, I have Rick Burgess and Adam Haddari. They're here for questions, and also Joan Prescott.
Thank you, Mrs. Pedrosso. I would like to direct council's attention also to a memo in the supplemental packet regarding the New Home Company project modification appeal, which deals with an alternate, modified grading alternative. That's in the supplemental packet. Okay, let's see here. We do have, do we have any other? Yes, it's page 16. Do we have any questions of staff? Mr. Adams?
Yes, thank you. Hello, Ms. Pedrosso. Just a couple of quick questions, please. Tell me again why the pad heights want to be increased on 118 and 20? Is that some sort of a grading issue or what?
If I remember correctly from the Planning Commission hearing, the applicant stated that they needed, they used additional pad elevations for both, for additional fill grading, as well also to work with the slope of the street.
For additional fill?
There, instead of, yeah, reduces export. Instead of exporting the land, the dirt, they actually raising the pad and putting the dirt in there.
Oh, okay. I get it. It reduces the export of fill.
Yeah.
Okay.
Keeps more on site.
Second question. The applicant wrote a letter about the Canale Recreation Park District claiming that they're eager to get this eight acres of land and have the trail completed, and they seem to imply that CRPD would be okay with this additional fill. They said, "Continue support for additional dirt on their property." Above and beyond the 25,000 that's already been approved. Is that accurate?
Well, I've discussed it with the general manager of the Canale Recreation Park District. They're, as to this particular proposed change to an already-approved project, they're essentially allowing the city process to take its course based on city policies and the council's decision, and then depending on what decision the council makes, the applicant would need to either follow the existing agreement with CRPD for the 25,000 cubic yards of fill, or they would then be in a position of going before CRPD and negotiating a new agreement for the greater amount of fill. And I would point out that the open space within this project was approved back in 2004 when the project was approved. I don't know whether that's the eight acres that's being referred to, but that was the property that the city actually zoned open space a long time ago, and it's probably been dedicated by now, so.
Okay. Got it. Thanks. Just two more quick things. On the business of this berm, nine feet tall, it's been said to be created at nine feet, any way you could estimate the cubic yards of fill to build that berm? Just the berm?
Actually, that's probably a question that the applicant can respond. I'm sure they have the civil engineer here, and they could probably give you a better estimate of the cubic yards.
All right. That's good. I'll ask that. And then finally, in the supplemental packet, there was a, I was the council member that asked, you know, inquired whether it was some kind of middle ground that could be reached, and if I'm reading this letter correctly, you state that you approached the applicant about a modified grading alternative, but the applicant did not express any interest in that. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Hmm. Okay. Well, then, that brings me to a question that, if you consider this modified grading alternative, can you tell me how much less fill that might generate versus the, above and be, okay, we have 25,000 that's been approved, 29,000 that hasn't, of the 29, I'm assuming your alternative would lessen that 29, correct? Do you know about how, by how much?
No, that, we have not discussed that with the applicant. So the only number that the applicant gave me is basically has to do with the, you know, basically with any grading that you do, there's like basically a 10% that you can go either way because of shrinkers, compaction, and so on and so forth, and that's the only, so there's no number besides that that I, that we discussed.
So maybe 10%?
10% will happen anyway, basically, no matter what it is.
Oh, I see.
Because that's just standard, it's the standard procedure.
That's kind of the wiggle room regardless.
Correct. It's a wiggle room. It's not an additional or...
All right. So we just don't know how much this modified grading alternative would decrease that excess fill at this point?
Well, I think maybe I can respond to that to some degree. It would, it would really depend on, if the council wanted to see that alternative, asking the applicant to come back and work with staff on what those parameters might be. And we would be looking for, obviously, it was our opinion that the grading plan that was approved in 2006 is, you know, already had substantial deviations from city policy and that that was something that, you know, could be accepted to accommodate some of the off-site fill, because we do know that to actually develop this site, there's an awful lot of cut that needs to occur, and that was what we felt was a reasonable compromise in terms of a balanced grading operation on one end or exporting everything at the other end. And so now it would be where in between the existing approval, which allows about half the dirt to be put on the park site, and the applicant's proposal, which would be almost all the dirt going on the park site, where do we want that alternative? And we would work with the applicant, I think, to reduce the, just the massive scale of the additional fill and how close it, how far out it projected to the north towards existing residences, and probably shave down the berm a little bit, and it would just, you know, we'd ask their engineer to do a plan, and that would tell us how many cubic yards it was.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any additional questions? None? Okay. Then we will go to our first speaker, Mr. Rick Bianchi with the appellant, applicant-appellant, followed by John Tissler and Dan Callan.
Can I ask him, please?
And Mr. Bianchi, you do have 15 minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name's Rick Bianchi. I'm here speaking on behalf of the New Home Company, and it's a pleasure to be in front of you, and I would like to take this opportunity to first express our thanks for the hard work that the Planning Commission has done so far and has worked with us, as earlier portrayed, and has really given us quite a bit of what we were seeking originally. But there's a significant component that remains that we're asking the City Council to also opine and possibly rule in our favor. But I do think it's important that I give a very brief historical perspective, and I would like to also say that we're very pleased to be in a position to build this exciting new project in your community. It's a project that will be named the collection at Thousand Oaks, but more commonly referred to as the Mayflower Site, and it's going to feature an attractive gated entry, 20 single-family detached homes, of which 50% of those homes will be single-family, popular single-story plans. There'll be four distinct architectural styles by the award-winning architectural firm of EBT-A. We're very confident that the finished project will be very attractive. This project was originally approved, as discussed earlier, in 2001, and then it was revised in 2006 but was not constructed due to the economic downturn. The New Home Company is seeking various changes to the project that we believe will significantly enhance the project, and like I've said privately with everybody, what we are not seeking is an increase in the number of houses or a reduction in any city fees. And again, just from a historical perspective, some of the benefits that were previously approved and go along with the project are the new architectural styles that we believe will be more widely embraced by the buying public, minor modifications to the lot lines that will accommodate these new architectural styles. The project will complete some public improvements, including a trail that will extend from Warwick into Canale Park, and it will, excuse me, it will complete the sidewalk along Warwick at Mayflower. The project has been designed to preserve all the oak trees currently on the site, and the trees will be protected during construction, of course, and the encroachments that had been mentioned earlier, those can be completely omitted by some minor revisions to the grading plan. The new slopes will be landscaped with native plants and trees that will blend naturally with the existing hillsides, and one of the conditions of approval on the project is the construction of a new water pump station. As many of you know, there is dangerously low water pressure in this project area, and the New Home Company will construct an approximately $1 million water booster pump station that will significantly improve... booster pump station that will significantly improve water pressure. And this improvement will be an obligation of the project and come at no cost to the community. The project will be private streets, so no street maintenance costs to the city. It will contribute significant fees to help maintain public parks, existing fees that have to get paid when the project's developed. Those fees will help, as I mentioned, maintain parks, the city library, street improvements, and public safety. The storm drain design will help reduce downstream flood impacts by retaining the stormwater on-site, and this water will be treated so that the silt and other debris will be reduced. The construction of these 20 new homes, we believe, will create new jobs and help to improve the local Thousand Oaks economy as well. Some of the benefits that Ms. Pedrosa mentioned earlier that are being considered this evening, that are part of our proposal, is that the grading plan modification that we're proposing will dramatically reduce the export of dirt that will reduce truck traffic by approximately 1,900 to 2,400 trips. These truck traffics, these truck vehicle trips will generate noise, dust, wear and tear to the city roads, and we believe that the short-term impacts greatly outweigh the permanent impact that the slope design will have. The new grading design will still allow us to contour grade the slopes so that they appear natural and will blend into the existing hillside. The public review process for the previous approvals were, was rigorous and thorough. The city planning staff determined that all impacts would be reduced to one of the following categories: less than significant with mitigation, less than significant impact, or no impact. The proposed modifications to the site will also be mitigated to levels identical with the previous approval. The New Home Company held a community outreach meeting on December 4th at the Los Robles Greens Golf Course, and 20 of our neighbors attended to hear our proposed changes. Overwhelmingly, the majority of those people in attendance supported the project and proposed changes, including four neighbors who signed letters of support that were previously in the Planning Commission packet, and others who have indicated they will be attending possibly even this evening. In addition, while we already have an agreement with CRPD to grade onto their property, we received continued support to negotiate the placement of the additional dirt onto their property, as the CRPD is eager to gain control of approximately the eight acres that have not yet been deeded over to them, and to have this trail constructed, and to help resolve an existing erosion problem that occurs whenever there's rainy events. From a more technical standpoint, it's the New Home Company's position that the proposed changes offer significant improvement to the previously approved plan, with the most dramatic benefit coming as a result of the reduction to the amount of dirt that would have to be exported from the site if the approved plan is constructed. The approved plan will require approximately 27,000 cubic yards of dirt being hauled off of the property. This is through city streets to a presently unidentified location. The equipment needed to perform this task are excavators and dirt haulers, and this is a very inefficient and time-consuming task, and would result in approximately, as aforementioned, 1,900 to 2,400 truck trips and add about 40 to 50 days to the grading schedule of the project, assuming we could achieve the export work using 60 truck trips per day. Therefore, the duration to the grade of the site per the approved plan would be approximately 50 to 70 days, as opposed to the 40 to 50 days based on the proposed plan. However, if the proposed changes are approved by the City Council, that would then allow the site to be considered a balanced site. No dirt would be leaving the site, and the overall duration of the grading would be reduced to approximately 20 to 30 days. The reason for this significantly reduced duration, even though we will be placing additional dirt on CRPD property, is because the equipment to move the dirt on-site is much, using dozers and scrapers, is a much more efficient process, and can move over 5,000 cubic yards per day versus an excavator and dirt hauler, which is limited to about 840 yards a day. The exhibit that I just handed you is very, is similar to what was shown on Ms. Pedrosa's PowerPoint, but I added some colors to help it look, be a little bit more easy to understand. The section CC and BB at the bottom in the middle of the page indicates the yellow grade, which is per the approved plan. The section AA, which is really the most relevant section here, does show the green area, which is the additional fill that we are proposing to put onto the slope. But when you see where that section is cut from, from the water tank down to the existing residents, that's a very, very long area of slope. And the actual top of the slope, of the hillside, and the toe of the slope don't change. So what we're really doing is taking this additional dirt and putting it on the middle of the slope. So we feel strongly that it doesn't really have any impact to the view shed of that immediate community. It doesn't put the toe of the slope of the greater slope any closer to the existing homes than the approved plan presently shows. The, I would also like to point out that the fill slope will be approximately 300 feet away from the existing homes to the north, and this slope will be contour graded and landscaped with native trees and shrubs, so that, so that it blends in with the surrounding hills. The proposed plan will be constructed to the highest industry standards, and we feel is a better plan from an engineering standpoint, in that it more adequately addresses the surface flow of the water, and will virtually eliminate any potential for erosion. My civil engineer is here to speak very briefly on that. The stability of the fill slope is also an area that we can assure you will be constructed to the highest standards as well. No portion of the slope will exceed a modest two-to-one gradient, and other areas will be less steep at three-to-one and four-to-one. The new slope will be extremely stable as the filled dirt will be benched into the hillside that will prevent any movement. My soil engineering geologist is here to address that in more detail. And with your permission, I'd like to invite our civil engineer up here to give you some information on...
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
And that would be Mr. John Olivier? Okay.
Dear Madam Mayor and the members of the City Council, my name is John Olivier, and I'm president of Fusco Engineering, and as well, I'm a registered civil engineer in the state of California. The New Home Company brought us on the project team in 2011, and we have been working closely with the, with the design team and Rick to develop the plans that we're reviewing here tonight. Our design effort included optimizing the site design for the housing product, and identifying design options to the previously approved plans. Tonight, I'd like to focus my brief comments on the grading proposed on the Cano Recreation Parks Department property adjacent to the site. Fusco Engineering identified early on the potential to limit dirt haul off from the project with the changes to the offsite grading. We worked closely with city staff to design a contour grading solution that would be acceptable to the city. In addition to eliminating the need for dirt haul off, the proposed grading plan includes the following. We extended the grading footprint to the north to provide additional area to contour grade the trail for a variable height berm. That berm varies in height from zero feet above the proposed trail to as much as six feet, and I think in limited cases, nine feet. We extended the trail westerly towards Cano Park to allow for a more constructable and natural transition with the existing grade. We introduced a mid-slope surface drain to collect and control runoff from the slope, and redesigned the lower surface drain, the lower level surface drain. The mid-level terrace drain is particularly advantageous, as it reduces the amount of surface flow that is able to traverse across the proposed slope. As a result, the potential for erosion is minimized. Lastly, we introduced a bio swell as part of the grading of the slope to enhance water quality treatment from the development. I'm confident stating that the proposed contour design, in addition to the mid-slope terrace drain, is an improvement from the previously approved plan in terms of living, in terms of limiting erosion and sediment transport. I'm available to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Yes, there is a question. Mr. Councilmember Adam?
Good evening. Perhaps you could give me, I had to ask staff about the berm. I wonder if you could give me some sort of an estimate of what kind of cubic yards of fill it would take to build that berm?
Yes, I did a quick calculation over there in the chair, so it's not precise as we might have if we had our computer programs. But that berm height, it's about 600 feet in length, and I estimated that it would take about 2,000 to maybe 2,500 cubic yards to fill that area.
Okay, all right. And can I ask Mr. Bianchi a question, please? Pardon me, my voice.
Yes, sir.
What was the neighbors' reaction to the berm?
The neighbors that attended our outreach meeting supported what we were proposing to do, because they recognized that it was going to create some additional privacy between the public trail and their houses. So we didn't get any negative feedback on that. Now, that is something that we can work with city staff on. That, that berm height can be lowered, can be raised. We thought actually that it was a, an improvement, certainly an opportunity to place additional dirt, but we thought it was to the immediate community's benefit. But we can work with the staff on that.
Could the berm be constructed independently of any other grading, sloping, extra cubic yards anywhere else on the hill, in the canyon, I should say?
No, because the berm would have to occur between the community trail and the existing properties, if, if we wanted the berm to achieve the results of creating some privacy. So when you say independent, we could, it could be eliminated, but then we would lose an opportunity to place dirt there.
No, I'm saying, forget about the cubic yards you're proposing to put on the slope. Could you just build the berm?
We could build the berm. Yes, sir, we could do that.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And last but not least, why would you not want to work on a modified grading alternative with the city, when it may be able to lower the cubic yards of fill that you'd have to export?
Well, we, the, the New Home Company would be glad to continue to work with the city. We've worked diligently for over a year to come up with some solutions that we thought would make sense. We could reduce the berm height, we could reduce the grading so that there would be no encroachments into the oak trees. The, the fact is that the grading that we have to, the dirt that we have to export from the site is based on a decision that the previous landowner decided to undertake, and take 30,000 yards approximately to another site that they had in the community. This was back in 2005, 2006. Today, we don't have that export site. We don't have another, another project to take that dirt, too. So we really just need to find an opportunity to keep that dirt on the site. I could see this conversation actually being in a completely different light if the original project required, approved project required the export of that dirt, that we could be, we could be standing here now, asking for us to, to take it to a different site. We don't, I'm sorry, I'm not making very good sense. We don't have another export site for that dirt. So we're really looking for a solution that works with the city, allows it to stay on the site, doesn't create the truck traffic trips, doesn't create the air pollution, the noise pollution, the dust pollution, and allows us still to move forward with the project.
Okay. Well, as we discussed at the site, I mean, it's $15 per cubic yard to move that stuff out of there, right?
That's correct.
And as you had said to me, every little bit helps.
That's right.
Right? So, you know, that's why I'm thinking, if the neighbors want that berm, there's 2,000, 2,500 cubic yards of dirt that could stay right there and not have to be exported.
That's true.
That's, I don't know, what's 15 dollars, that's what, what's that, 150 grand?
Sure.
Somebody get a calculator, quick.
Right.
And, and the other business, of course, our city staff is pretty sharp, and I suspect they could come up with a few more potential solutions to, you know, lower the amount of dirt that would have to be exported off that site. Maybe not the 28,000, 29,000 cubic yards you want, but...
Understood. There probably is a solution in there somewhere. Today, we're proposing what we are, but if, if it goes in another direction, we'd be glad to consider that.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Bianchi.
My pleasure. And the soil engineer is here, if you have any questions.
Mr. Matt Hawley?
Yes.
Okay.
He was going to make a very, very quick presentation during the 15 minutes.
But we do have additional questions, I believe. Is it for Mr. Bianchi, or is it for the, for the engineer?
I think it's for the question.
No, there's one card for all three speakers. So would you like to ask a question of Mr. Hawley? This is the soil engineer?
Yes, please.
Okay, then let's call up Mr. Hawley.
I have a prepared statement. May I read it first, or would you like to go speak?
Well, why don't I start with a question, and then it's all, then go ahead and do your prepared statement, and then we're doing it the correct way. What I really want to know is, my concern would be that we have, that with all this, this fill that we're putting in there, that we have less stability on the hillside. So, from what I'm reading, that's not the case, but perhaps your prepared statement will go into stability of the site with the additional fill.
My prepared statement doesn't go into perhaps the amount of detail you would like to answer your question. To stay away from this and to just answer your question, we have reviewed the site with, based on the new design and the data that is available, which includes a report that we prepared on the site in 2006, previous reports of that site, and published geologic maps and other reports that are commonly available. The bedrock at that site consists of sedimentary bedrock that is of the Topanga Formation, which is a sandstone and conglomerate rock. It's very dense and cemented hard. And it also consists of the Monterey Formation, which is a dense silt stone, if you will, or clay stone or mudstone rock, which is common in this area, and everyone's quite familiar with it. The orientation of the bedding planes within those rocks, overall the formations dip to the northeast, but the bedding planes within the formations themselves are folded. So there is a, I wouldn't call it prominent, but there is a Anna Klein that runs through the site, and also a Sing Klein that runs through the site, and those project generally in an east to west fashion. The bedrock is generally steeper than the slope, so any additional fill that gets placed on top of the bedrock isn't much of a driving force, in that if my slope is at a gentle angle and my bedrock is at a steeper angle, the driving forces are into the ground and basically not parallel or cutting across through the ground. So based on previous stability analysis we've done on the site, and inspection of the revised plan, we are confident that just standard cut and grading techniques will be used at the site to, to make a stable site, and it will wind up being safe from slippage and things of that nature.
So, basically the same stability as the previous design, or?
Yes, it would be equal to, there are standard, standard specifications for slopes throughout Southern California, and it would meet those specifications.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you. You may go ahead with your statement if you still wish to do so. You have, I believe...
I've kind of addressed everything in here. I've...
Four minutes, I think you have.
Perhaps I can just address any other questions?
There are no additional questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Our next...
Madam Mayor, I guess Mr. Bianchi might be able to best answer my question.
Oh, you do have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. Bianchi.
Good evening, sir.
Yes, sir.
Full disclosure, I think, pretty sure Mr. Bianchi and my family grew up in the San Fernando Valley area, played baseball with his older brothers. Just, full disclosure.
And I'm pretty sure we both go to the same barber.
That's exactly right. Exactly right. You mentioned, Mr. Bianchi, that you presently don't have a location where you would put the excess dirt.
That's correct. We have not identified an export site.
Looking at the site map, it is fair to say that if you had to transport it outside the city, likely Moore Park Road and then the 101 freeway would be the normal route that you would use, because there's no area there other than your proposal of which you would be able to move the dirt. Is that correct?
I think that's a correct statement, Councilman Fox, and I think that it's important to note as well that the, we would have to work on a haul route permit with the city staff, of course.
Right.
They would likely want the trucks to exit the residential area as quickly as possible, which means they'd have to get out onto Moore Park, Moore Park Road as soon as possible. Moore Park Road in Mayflower is an uncontrolled intersection, meaning there's no signal. Likely those trucks would have to, would be encouraged or required to turn right indeed to get to the 101 freeway. But as we all know, from Mayflower and Moore Park Road to the 101 freeway is a heavily traveled and congested commercial area of the city. I think that any opportunity to avoid having those trucks travel on that street would be, would be wise. But clearly, there is no location within one or two or three miles of the site that could accept 30,000 cubic yards of dirt.
Right. And I totally agree, by the way. I'll have to go back to staff on that. And I note here that you have in the packet, you did your community meetings, and your proposal is supported by the adjacent residents.
That's correct. We actually had a surprisingly good turnout, considering the time of the year that it was in December. And in fact, the conference room at the Los Robles Greens was, was overflowing with people. There, nobody in attendance at that meeting expressed any objections to our proposed plan, and in fact, expressed support, because it was going to lead to the completion... lead to the completion of the pump station that has been promised to the community since the project was proposed over six years ago.
Mr. Fox, just for the record, we will hear from three people who are opposed to the project.
Okay, very good. And then I note on page 60, the staff report, that's the, from the Park District, that's their written agreement to take the extra dirt. Page 60. Mr. Bianchi, is that correct?
Yes, it is. The, we already have a written...
I know that.
Oh, yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker, thank you, Mr. Bianchi. Oh, Jack, Mrs. Irwin has a question for you, Mr. Bianchi.
Yes, ma'am.
Sure, we'll get it right eventually. Mr. Bianchi, just for the record, what would the cost be to remove all the dirt?
There's approximately, we've estimated to be cost approximately $15 per cubic yard, and based on the 30,000 plus or minus cubic yards it would have to be removed from the site, it's approximately a $450 to likely $500,000 economic impact to the project. That would include the permits and other costs that would be associated with moving the dirt off the site.
Right. Thank you.
My pleasure.
All right. No additional questions, for sure. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Bianchi. We will now hear from residents John Tisler, Dan Callen, and Dick Hughes, former mayor, Dick Hughes. Good evening.
Hello, council members. My name is John Tisler. I live on Avon Circle in Thousand Oaks. My house backs on to Kenejo Community Park, and I'm located at what would be the northwest corner of the project site, which, as I understand it, is also part of Kenejo Community Park. I am not opposed to the placement of houses on the development site, but I am very much opposed to the additional fill that would be placed on the community park land. I think the staff report very well describes short and long-term impacts to the community, but there are some additional points, I guess I'd like to reiterate, and a few other thoughts I'd like to add concerning those impacts. My reading of the plan and my reading of the staff report is that the current grading permit maintains the general swell that occurs on that hillside, something of the natural contour and slope and aspect that exists there. The additional fill will turn the hillside into something more akin to an earthen dam. It'll be much less attractive, and as the staff report says, it will really, in a lot of ways, loom up behind the homes that run along the north side of that park. The photos you saw in the presentation by the staff person, they tend to exaggerate the distance from the north end of the park to the project site. It really is much smaller. I'm particularly opposed to the idea of the berm. It will have an impact both on park users and on homeowners. There are, in fact, some rather fine views from the existing trail as one walks along it from east to west, and a placement of berm will, a berm will block those trails. Either the pedestrians will have to, or the hikers will have to climb that berm, which would actually result in a loss of privacy, or they would simply have to walk along and be denied their view. As for the homeowners, that trail or the land tends, as you go west, tends to drop away from the trail. My own house sits about nine to 11 feet below the trail. The addition of a berm can, if it were potentially at its full height of nine feet, would mean that there was something like 18 feet of very steep slope immediately behind the homes. I don't think that's something any of the homeowners would want there. I might also add that the privacy that would be created for the trail users would tend to make people hang out there, both adults and youth. And I can say that because my house is located right at the point where things are their most private, and people tend to sit up there and drink at all hours of the day, and it's part of my monthly routine to go up there, in fact, and clean out all the bottles. And I don't think we want to encourage more of that kind of thing. As far as mitigation for appearance, I'm a biologist with about 20 years' experience in native revegetation, and I can tell you that revegetating a fill slope is a difficult thing to do. It's not an agreeable soil environment for many native plants, and in fact, I doubt we'll have much there other than a few subshrubs, native subshrubs, and a lot of grasses when all is said and done, particularly if completion of the project is left up to the homeowners' association. I'm running out of time, unfortunately. I did want to mention that, oh, yes, the site is also a fairly visible site. It's viewable from the playing fields of Redwood Middle School, it's visible from Tarantula Hill. Anything that creates that sort of pad-like, dam-like appearance will be a detriment to many, many park users. I'd also like to say the area is rich in wildlife. There's road runners, California kingsnakes, red-tailed hawks, white-tailed kites, until the mange went through, bobcats. All of those animals and their prey are utilizing the terrain there. They're making use of the swales, the changes in slope and aspect, and the concomitment changes in water availability and microhabitat, and the homogenization of that slope into a more or less single-cut slope is going to most definitely be a detriment to the wildlife using that area. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is, oh, Mr. Adam, Councilmember Adam, has a question for you, Mr. Tisler.
Hello, sir. How are you? So, on the berm, you don't feel the benefit of the berm is privacy, for you?
No, not at all. There are, well, there are already many shrubs. The neighbors have planted plants there. You, from my house, you occasionally see the head of someone walking by, but it's really not a disturbance. The disturbance occurs when people choose to sit and spend an hour back there. You know, obviously, as I discover later when I go out there drinking, or, you know, you can smell them smoking the cigarettes. So, I don't have a problem with people walking by. I wouldn't want the trail to be in plain view of my house, but that view is already broken by the vegetation. I'd rather see vegetation there than additional hill slope above my house, and I'd certainly rather see the area open. And for the people who enjoy the park, it's a much nicer experience not to have a berm there. People do utilize that trail. They have been, I've been living there for 16 years, and that trail has been in constant use. People enjoy it. It's part of the community park there.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Price has a question for you.
Actually, it's probably more of a question for Mr. Bianchi. I know that it was described that this berm would vary in elevations throughout the hillside there, and I'm just wondering if where Mr. Sisler lives is intended to have one of the higher-level berms, or whether it would be on the lower end of the scale.
Mr. Bianchi, thank you, Mr. Tisler.
I could just say, actually, when I look at the project's map, I am just at the edge of it. There wouldn't be a berm there. I am thinking not so much of my own home, but I'm thinking of all the neighbors who live to the east of me.
I think that answers my question, but if you had something you wanted to add to that, Mr. Bianchi?
Frankly, he answered that question very correctly. The berm wouldn't start until about the second house in, but it would be, it would start from zero, and it would grow very subtly to an elevation of about six feet high, and then meander, and then go back down to a zero elevation at the end of about a 600-foot run. But the berm, again, we thought was a positive thing. If it's not something that, if it indeed is something that the council is concerned could create a security issue, that could easily be removed from the grading plan, or lowered.
Okay. One more question. Is it Mr. Adam, is it for Mr. Bianchi, or is it for Mr. Tisler? All right.
Well, that's exactly what I'm trying to ascertain. Is the berm a positive thing? And the only way I could ascertain that is from you telling me what the people behind the berm, the proposed berm, have said to you. Now, this gentleman, the berm would not affect his property, but the people that would see the berm, what have they said to you? I thought you'd...
Well, the fact is, as the resident pointed out, there is a substantial amount of trees and shrubs that are along their back property line. There already is a preponderance of privacy, if you will, along there. Now, we were trying to find a home for dirt. Let's just be perfectly clear about that.
Yep, yep, yep.
So, we thought that by, and when you look at any one of the sections on the exhibit, when you put the berm in between the new trail location and the existing homes, you would just have a very subtle berm, a very gentle slope that would reach a height of about six feet or maybe a little less than my height, and then go back down to a zero elevation as it approached the existing homes. If, again, the council or the community isn't supportive of that berm, it could be lowered or removed altogether. But the trail will go along, will run parallel to the berm.
Mm-hmm.
So, as people are walking along there, it's not going to be a very steep cut that's on each side of the trail. It's going to be a very, very gentle slope. So, people will have a long view. I can't speak against the fact that somebody may want to sit and stop on the slope and do whatever they're going to do, but I don't think the berm exacerbates that. If they're going to do it, they're going to do it today, whether the berm is there or not.
Okay, Mr. Bianchi, thank you very much. I think I want to get through the other three speakers before we go into detail with the, some of the questions. Dan Callen, Dick Hughes, and Anthony Moses. Dan Callen, not here. Okay. Dick Hughes, former mayor of Thousand Oaks, and Anthony Moses.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and members of the staff. My name is Dick Hughes, and I am a longtime resident of Thousand Oaks, as most of you know, I think. This proposed residential project on the west side of Warwick Avenue at Mayflower Street will be among the last group of new residential developments in Thousand Oaks as available sites slowly disappear over the next few years. The applicant, the New Home Company, and the city staff have collaborated to develop a plan for a small neighborhood that is sensitive to both the location on top of a prominent hill and to its surroundings. I have walked the site, studied the staff reports, and perused this hefty little document called the mitigated negative declaration. I don't know who in the world dreamed that up. Based on what I have seen on the site, read in the reports, and heard from the staff, it looks like a carefully conceived and diligently pursued project. I urge the council to deny the appeal as recommended by the staff and the planning commission, and authorize the project to go forward in accordance with the MND. I'm confident that the ultimate residence of the homes on that hill will have a nice neighborhood, and most of them will have great views of our beautiful valley and the surrounding mountains. And I'm confident the New Home Company will be very proud of their beautiful new development on the hill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. And Mr. Dan Callen actually also filled out a written statement card, and with concern about the berm, and I will pass this to the other council members. Our last speaker is Anthony Moses.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Anthony Moses of Fullerton. I own 950 Warwick Avenue, which is entitled for a 23-home development and adjacent to the Reserve and Mayflower Development. Reserve and Mayflower Development is conditioned to build a $1.2 million water pumping station and related infrastructure, which will alleviate residential pressure and fire flow deficiencies affecting current residents and no cost to the city or current residents. It is our understanding from the city's water purveyor, California American Water, that there are severe deficiencies in that service area that affect current residents and could result in disruption of water supply for firefighting in an emergency. We strongly support New Home Company's modification application, as the modification will make the project viable without negatively impacting neighbors or the community, and will actually reduce impact during construction by significantly reducing export and truck trips. The severe real estate downturn since this project was conditioned with the requirement to build the water pumping station has made this project less financially viable. As such, the neighborhood continues to be affected by this serious public safety issue. The development of this project and related water service infrastructure will provide a critical and overdue public benefit by improving fire safety for current residents and property owners in the water service zone. We ask the council to balance the important public benefits that the new water and emergency fire pump infrastructure will provide when considering the impact of this modification. We believe that the immediate and long-term benefit to the community of the water service improvements greatly outweighs the impact of the onsite grading.
Thank you. And that was our last speaker. And we will turn it over to staff for responses, and any questions from the council?
I think both Mr. Hey, Derek, excuse me, and Mr. Burgess have comments based on what was said before. So, Mr. Burgess, do you want to start?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to respond to Mr. Tisler's comments, which were very on point. He pointed out that the revegetation of a fill slope in that area is going to be very difficult, and it's true, it is difficult to revegetate fill slopes. If it's done appropriately, and the plants are established well, we could, I think, attempt to revegetate a native coastal sage shrub slope, and perhaps improve what's there now, because the slope is somewhat degraded in terms of wildlife. It will have an impact on wildlife, definitely. Hopefully, many of those species will be able to get out of the way of the graders, but that always is a problem. However, if we do revegetate the slope correctly, it's possible it could be, actually be a better place for wildlife than it is now.
Good evening. Just wanted to touch on the water improvements, although they're kind of a secondary item. But, yeah, I can confirm that the project has been required to, and it's not a new requirement, it's been required since the beginning to construct the pump station in order to boost the domestic pressure on the street. So, it's a function of the domestic pressure that's existing on the street, not to do with any fire flow or fire service that is afforded by the existing water system out there. So, I wouldn't really classify it as a public safety issue. The current status of the water improvements on Warwick Avenue there, it's more of a boost for the domestic pressure to get it up to a better pressure and a more convenient status for the homeowners.
Any additional comments regarding the issues raised by the speakers? None? Okay. Does council have any questions for staff? Mr. Fox?
I think it was Mr. Sisler mentioned the, and I was looking through the conditions, I didn't quite get to it. In terms of the revegetation, Mr. Burgess talked about, is there a way to compel, because I think it was referenced that the homeowners' association would be tasked with doing that. Is there a way to compel the project applicant to do that, to make sure that that's done at a sufficient degree and scope to deal with the concerns about revegetation?
Well, it's interesting you should ask that. There is actually a condition, condition number 40 under landscaping, which requires that the manufactured slope on CRPD land be maintained and set in place by the developer. And the final landscape plan will be subject to review and approval by the community development department. Once the landscaping is in, it's possible the homeowners' association would take care of that, but if it's a properly-designed coastal sage shrub slope, it shouldn't need any care at all.
Well, I'm going to defer to staff, but I'd like to see us put a condition in that, because that's, there's three issues, and I'll get to the other two, I think, that... Because that's, there's three issues, and I'll get to the other two, I think, that basically have surfaced over this project. One is the revegetation. I'd like, with council concurrence, to put a condition in that would require up to three years, five years of maintenance by the developer to ensure that whatever's put there is there and is permanent. So, let's just say five years. If it lasts five years, I think it's a good bet it's going to be there for a long time. And again, if there's concurrence of the council, prepare a condition that basically addresses that. The second issue is the berm. We had some conflicting testimony here this evening with respect to what the berm is, what it isn't, what the impacts will be with respect to the other residents. What I'd like to do is I'd like staff to modify the conditioning on the berm that would provide for flexibility to address what we've heard here this evening. Mr. Bianchi testified that the berm goes from zero to six feet. We just want to make sure that the security issues that have been raised, both in the correspondence to the council and the staff report and testimony, are mitigated as much as possible. Mr. Bianchi indicated that the berm could be addressed and actually modified as part of the proposed grading plan. I'd like a condition that basically outlines what that looks like with respect to modification to address the security issues, within the context of the approval of their appeal. And then, the third thing which came up is the wildlife, that Mr. Burgess addressed that if the revegetation issue is accomplished in a positive way, that the wildlife corridor actually would improve. So, I think that even lends itself more to, let's put that on the applicant, let's make sure that is done right, and then we don't have any wildlife corridor issues, because the revegetation has taken place. So, those seem to be the three items that surfaced with respect to both the testimony and the information the applicant provided us. I guess my other question would be, Mr. Prescott, the discussion between Mr. Bianchi and myself relative to the truck route, should the appeal not be granted? And we're looking at somewhere between 2,400 truck trips that, based on my knowledge of the area, basically, it's going to end up on Moore Park Road, and it's going to end up on the 101 freeway, would it not?
Excuse me, the actual determination of all route would be by the public works department, but I think that's a fair statement. They'll want to get it to an arterial street out of the residential area right away, and then if the, you know, depending on where the approved fill site is, if it's out of the community along the 101 corridor, probably just down Moore Park to the 101.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fox. Any additional questions or comments to staff by the council? Mr. Price.
I have questions about the pump station. I've heard it stated by Mr. Bianchi that this pump station, which we know is a condition that was put in there back in 2004, but that there is no cost to the community, yet I've read that the cost of that will be paid back to, through the rate payers. And I'm curious, which of those is accurate?
Yes, that is correct. The latter is accurate. The project site is served by California American Water Company, and the mechanism they have set up with a CPUC provides for a payback over a long amount of time to developers for public infrastructure improvements they make that benefit their water systems. So, I believe it's referenced somewhere in the packet that there's a 40-year payback at 2.5% per year. So, the entire amount is, in fact, refunded to the developer. It's obviously over a long period of time, so the time value of money is not quite there, and you can't really equillate it. But that is a unique situation that would not exist if this property was located in the city water area, kind of in the more central part of the city, just east of Moore Park Road, whereas the developer would make the improvements, the city would assume ownership, and there would be no payback. So, it's kind of a unique circumstances here.
I do have a question for the city staff, perhaps Mr. Burgess, is regarding the fill on CRPD property. You mentioned impact on wildlife and a font on flora. Is it, what happens when that much dirt is dumped onto an area that is wildlife habitat, native California plant habitat? What happens?
Well, it's not a good thing. In general, when you dump that kind of soil on vegetation, it's going to, you know, completely demolish it. In terms of wildlife, those that can get away will, and it's not a really pristine area. It's somewhat degraded, so it's possible there isn't as much wildlife as you might expect on a pristine site of that size, but still, there are going to be some impacts, certainly. And those are pretty much unavoidable.
Thank you for mentioning that. Do we have any additional comments? None? Okay, then we're going to call back up Mr. Bianchi for your rebuttal, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, and I'll try to be brief, because I know this has run long for everybody, but what I was trying to spit out earlier is actually an important point, and I'm going to try it again. What I was trying to say earlier is if we were here tonight asking for approval to export 30,000 yards of dirt off of this site, I got to imagine that this council would not support that request. I have to imagine there would be many more people in this audience here to express their concern over that. So, what we're seeking tonight is a way to leave the dirt on the site. We know that there are some impacts. We recognize that there's some impacts to the wildlife and to the vegetation, but there always were. Even the approved plan that we could build today would have those same similar impacts. I would also like to point out to Councilmember Fox, and thank you for your comments regarding the maintenance of those slopes. Builders have been building, constructing landscape slopes for a lot of years, and it's actually the mechanism of maintenance through the homeowners association that usually results in those slopes being maintained in a superior condition, because the HOA then contracts with a professional landscape management company to ensure that those slopes are maintained on a regular basis, as opposed to putting them into the homeowner's personal or private use area. I would also like to just acknowledge very briefly, the 40-year payback period is such a long duration of time. It's really not, the developer does not really anticipate a return on that investment of a million dollars. So, when I say no cost impact to the community, nobody's rates are going to be going up as a result of that. It'll just be the normal rate payers that, through that mechanism, will dribble some of the money back to the developer, again, over a very long period of time. And finally, I would like to just reiterate that in terms of the impacts of this additional grading we'll have on this hillside, the grading will not, the additional grading will not be any higher than the existing top of the hill. In other words, the top of the hill is the water tank. We're going to be well below that. So, any grading that we're doing on this hillside is really not going to impact the overall height of the hill or the view that the immediate community or even the far-off community has of this hillside. Once it's all said and done and landscaped, there's going to be houses there, but the approved plan already stipulates that that's going to occur. The additional grading, we believe, will have a very, very minimal impact on the view of this hill. But thank you for your comments and questions tonight.
Mr. Bianchi, I do have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
What is your answer right now as to whether you would be willing to take another look at the grading and so forth?
The, we would ask that we be given a specific goal if we would... The economics of the project are so tight, there's only 20 houses to spread these costs over. If this was a 200-unit subdivision, we wouldn't be here. This cost could be absorbed. But when you take the half a million dollars and spread it over 20 lots, we only have 20 homes to generate revenue. That's $50,000 per dwelling unit. It's a significant amount of money. When you add the money, the cost of the pump station, the cost of the additional streetlight that we're talking, the other cost to develop the project, it's a very expensive project to develop. So, I would ask that if that's the direction that the council would like us to move in, to give us a specific number to decide whether we would agree to it or not.
And I think that specific number of staff was not able to get, because you hadn't been talking about details, and they would need additional time, correct?
Well, the fact is, it could be any number. It could be, you could approve the plan, and we would get relief and leave 30,000 yards on the property. Or it could be any number less than that, depending on your discretion. We believe that we could place an additional 4,000 yards on the slope that would fall within the 10% variability that any grading operation has. The slope could be 10% thicker or 10% thinner, just based on the normal values of dirt as you're grading. So, that would be 3,000 yards right there. So, any other number would just be arbitrary, would be arbitrary, because the staff has already indicated that no additional grading should be approved. So, if it was, I guess what I'm trying to say is if you felt that there was a number in between 30,000 yards and zero, I would need to know what that number is, so we could say that's, would be economically valuable to us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, any questions on Mr. Bianchi? Mrs. Irwin.
If we were going to come up with another number, then everything has to be reengineered, correct?
The reengineering wouldn't be significant. The final grading plans haven't been drawn. I would like to reiterate that even if the council approved the 30,000 yards of dirt to remain on the site, that it would be contragrated. Even though the slope would be fatter, it would still be contragrated. In other words, it would still undulate and look natural. So, it would be, from a distance, it would just be, you wouldn't perceive the difference in the depth of the slope. It would be impossible to perceive the depth of that slope. We could make any changes to the grading plan, as the council would dictate.
Thank you. All right. And if there are no additional questions of staff, I will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and/or a motion. Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, actually, it's been the first time in a long time, we have five former planning commissioners sitting on the city council. So, I can say this without any further contradiction. Our city's history has been to strive for balanced grading in almost in every case. And I think of all the things Mr. Bianchi said this evening, the one that I think rings truest is that if this proposal was being brought to council this evening, and the proposal was to have 2,400 truck trips for the next two and a half months, go down Moore Park Road and work its way to the 101, there would be a lot more people in this chamber saying, "What were you thinking?" So, from my perspective, that's really the determining factor on what we should do with respect to this project. I think there are some planning issues with you, such as grading, with berming, the revegetation, all those conditions which we've spent many hours working on over the years. That's why you have conditions. I think you have those conditions in order to address the specifics of the project. But the larger issue here, the community impact here, is 2,400 truck trips going through the 50-yard line of Thousand Oaks. That's a big deal. And I think if we can do something to prevent that, that's not going to create precedent, that's not going to create other planning issues, I think we'd be remiss in not taking advantage of that. To me, this is a no-brainer. This grading plan that they've provided to the council, I think, makes a lot of sense. I think the issues that were brought up under public testimony with respect to berming can be addressed through staff. If there are security issues, again, I think we had some conflicting testimony. I think we need to leave that to staff and the applicant to deal with the berming, so we don't increase the security issues, which is, we all understand, are currently there. So, we're not creating a new environment, we just don't want to make it worse. And the revegetation issue, which I think Mr. Burgess correctly outlined, actually, if we do it right, can actually be an improvement. Now, that's why I think, based on the testimony heard from the citizens, I'd like to put that onus on the applicant, either through a bond or whatever is necessary to make sure that's done right. So, ultimately, I think we have a project that's basically in an established residential area that could generate tremendous negative impacts, not just to that residential area, but to the thousands of people that drive up and down Moore Park Road every day. I'd just like the council to maybe think for a moment and picture those large trucks that are used to move dirt, stop-and-go traffic all along Moore Park Road, the interchange at Moore Park and the 101 freeway, waiting for the lights and going either north or south. I think that would be a disaster. And so, to me, really, that's the overriding factor. So, based on that, I'm going to go ahead and move that the council approved the appeal and certify the MND 286. I'm not so sure about the appellant's requested conditions. You know, I'm going to leave it to staff, maybe the city attorney, to give the council some direction, assuming council agrees with the direction that we're going. But I do want the conditions that I asked staff to outline with respect to the berming, the revegetation, and the cost passed on to the developer, not the homeowners association, to be included in those conditions. Ms. Noonan, if those conditions that are outlined in the staff report need to be modified, then I would incorporate that in my motion as well.
What I would suggest is that you, in approving the MND and approving the appeal, that you direct city staff to revise the conditions consistent with your approval to allow the modified grading and pad elevations, and that you also include a revised condition to allow staff flexibility to approve final plans for the berm, to include security measures, and that you also include a new condition requiring a, what, three- or five-year maintenance program for the revegetation of the berm?
Yeah, let's say five.
Okay.
And then, finally, what I would share with the council is, I think the cost associated with the transportation of the dirt, while it certainly is a benefit to the applicant, that should be irrelevant to the council. In this particular case, I know council has full latitude to look at financial impact, unlike the planning commission. That's absolutely appropriate for us to look at. But in this particular case, I think what happens to work for the applicant works extremely well for the residents, and that needs to be the overriding factors. What's best for the folks of Thousand Oaks? Not just the neighbors there, but really, the neighbors and the folks that are driving up and down Moore Park Road each and every day. This would be a tremendous impact. I respectfully do disagree with staff. I think the short-term impact would be significant, and I think the longer-term impacts can be mitigated through conditions. And that's why I think it would be wise for council to add those additional conditions. So, with that, I'm asking for a yes vote to grant the appeal, as amended this evening by the motion.
Councilmember Irwin.
I will be repeating a few things that Mr. Fox says. My concern also is the short-term impact of the 1,800 to 2,400 truck trips, traffic, air pollution, road damage. I think that's very significant. I think it's much more pragmatic to leave the fill on the location. And it's also significant that this is going on CRPD property, and they certainly have no heartburn with this grading plan at all. We've also heard from the two scientists or engineers that there's no stability issue, and there is potentially better erosion control with the new plan. And I also think Mr. Fox addressed Mr. Tischler's, some of Mr. Tischler's concerns. I think it's very important that staff work on the, being a little bit flexible with the berm height, to make sure that all the security issues are addressed. Obviously, that trail has been a headache for the residents there for a very long time, and I'm not sure whether, I don't think a six-foot berm is a good idea, but a lower berm, I'm not sure if that's going to impact security one way or another. But I do appreciate that Mr. Tischler also brought up about the revegetation, so I am fully supportive of the additional conditions being added on this project. And with that, then, support your motion.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Irwin. And I personally have, I have concerns regarding the security measures that were raised by the neighbor, and I'm not entirely sure whether that berm needs to be as high as it is, because Mr. Tischler did mention that he would be looking at an 18-foot-high back hillside, basically, whereas that is not the case right now. The conditions imposed... The conditions imposed right now are to basically soften short-term impact. The long-term impact, of course, is on the property site itself. That is permanent. That cannot be changed. The truck traffic is temporary. That'll be over in six weeks, more or less. And I am ambivalent about it. I wish that you would be working with staff again, because staff, for obvious reasons, did deny this, and/or did deny the appeal, recommended to deny the appeal. You have a permanent impact versus a short-term impact. So that is, I think, what I would like my colleagues also to consider. Mr. Adams.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to see this project built. I think it's a good project. I think it brings benefit to the community. It's a beautiful site, by the way. I walked it. I like the pump station up there. The water pressure is weak in the surrounding community. And the mayor's right, it's short-term impact versus long-term impact. And it's money, too. There's no question about it, for the applicant, of course. What I'm hearing is, we got 4,000 cubic yards of dirt in addition to the 25 or so that have already been appealed. Wiggle room, right? 4,000. Got another 3,000 or so for the berm, which I would concede. That's 7,000 cubic yards. That's one-fourth of what you want. That would save $100,000, and that would eliminate short-term truck trips by about 25%, all right? If we go with granting the appeal, long-term, we're left with a 31-foot-deep slope, 72 feet high, encroaching on 25% hillsides. That's going to be hard to revegetate. Ask the city of Westlake Village about revegetating hillsides. They're having a devil of a time with the park that they put in. They're trying to put in a long Thousand Oaks Boulevard. It's tough. You know, I think the staff has conceded 25,000 cubic yards. I think that's a major concession. Again, I think we get 4,000 yards wiggle room and another 3,000 for the berm. That's a quarter of what you want. It would cut those truck trips, cut your costs by 100,000. I think you could build it with that. So in my mind, I would have to feel that the longer-term impact of this slope that we'd be left with outweighs the shorter-term impact of some truck trips. So I, again, I'd like to see it built, but I can't support the motion as it's put forth.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to address the security concerns that, and I think the notion that the security concerns are going to be any greater with that berm there are probably misguided. If the situation already exists, this isn't going to exacerbate it, it's going to continue. That is something that needs to be dealt with by the police department. And they would be directed to patrol this on a regular basis. And also, I would encourage the residents there to call when they see people congregating back there for any period of time. That is going to happen. And I happen to know, being a member of the law enforcement community, that where those situations exist, you know, throwing something else in front of it isn't going to cause it to get worse. So I think that using Councilmember Adams' figures there, you're getting a quarter of your truck trips or a quarter of the cubic yards, really doesn't get us a whole lot closer to solving the issue, because that still leaves you with about 1,800 truck trips, which is still going to be a significant impact, very significant impact, traveling up and down Moore Park Road and getting onto the 101 freeway. I think this is a good project. I think it's well-thought-out. I think that there, clearly there is some tremendous public benefit with the addition of that pump station there. And for those reasons, and the reasons stated by the other council members, I would be in support of it. Thank you.
Mr. Fox, any comments regarding that? No? Okay, then I will ask for a vote on this project. Thank you, and congratulations on your project. I'm sure it will be beautiful. Very good. All right, we have now...
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just for the record, I want to include the motion, included the oak tree permit as well.
Okay. Very good. And number 9A is now the creation of the Conejo Valley Tourism Improvement District, and this will be presented by Andrew Powers, Assistant to the City Manager.
I'm here this evening to provide you with a very brief update on our regional tourism efforts, and ask for your consent in naming the city of Agora Hills as lead agency to begin the formation of the proposed Conejo Valley Tourism Improvement District. Just to give you a recap of how we got to where we are this evening, our current efforts began in the fall of 2010, when you approved funding that helped to pay for a feasibility study and tourism plan, taking stock of all of our regional assets. Since that time, staff from various cities, the chamber, and local lodging providers have been working on plans to advance local tourism efforts. That work has led us to propose the creation of the local Conejo Valley Tourism Improvement District. Just to give you a quick recap on the tourism study findings, we worked to draft a tourism master plan and a feasibility study. Both of those documents pointed to the need for organization in local tourism efforts. That brought us to where we are this evening, which is the beginning process in creating a tourism improvement district in the Conejo Valley. State law requires that in formation of these districts that cover multiple jurisdictions, that one lead agency be selected. In this case, the city of Agora Hills has offered to become that lead agency. Their responsibility will be to host the public hearings associated with this and collect the balloting that comes in from the lodging providers when they vote on whether to assess themselves. The next step would be to select an independent nonprofit to promote the entire region. In our case, our recommendation is going to be for the Chamber of Commerce to serve as that agency. Following that, we would create the benefit assessment district, actually draw the boundaries. And then the last step would be passage of a resolution to proceed with district formation, and that would be done through a public hearing with the lead agency, in this case, the city of Agora Hills. Talking a little bit about what structure would look like, as I mentioned before, the Conejo Valley Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Conejo Valley Chamber of Commerce would manage the district as proposed. There'd be 14 lodging businesses in Thousand Oaks and Agora Hills that would be part of the district. The city of Westlake Village, despite being a partner throughout this process, has elected to remain on the sidelines at this time, but they may elect to join the district any time, and it's our hope that they will do so. The district itself would be funded through a $1 per room night assessment on hotel bills, and it's anticipated to generate about $450,000 a year. And a steering committee would be seated to oversee the funds. That steering committee would be comprised of local lodging providers and representatives from the various cities. Just touching briefly on benefits of such districts, and many of these benefits have been realized by our neighbors in West County Ventura, who established the Camrio Oxnard and Ventura Tourism Improvement District that has helped to improve their efforts and place them in a better strategic position when going after tourists. It helps to increase our local hotel occupancy, provides a stable funding source for tourism, it more effectively manages our existing tourism activities, this is a really important point. We have a lot of things that are already taking place in the Conejo Valley, and it's our thought that we're not as effectively managing all these and leveraging our opportunities there as best we can. It also gives us the opportunity to strategically pursue conferences and events, those things that really add value to our local economy. And it'll help fund marketing and promotional budgets, things that are really helpful with events like the Amgen Tour of California that we've hosted a couple of times. And finally, on next steps, after this evening, if the council elects to grant authority to the city of Agora Hills to serve as lead agency, we begin finalizing the district boundary, which as comprised would include the city of Thousand Oaks and the city of Agora Hills. We'd finalize and submit a formal management district plan, including all the details of the district. It would then, we'd then initiate the petition drive, which would require over 50% of lodging businesses to vote in favor of creating the district. Reminder, this is purely voluntary, and lodging properties vote to self-assess. And then the final step would be to pass resolutions of intention and formation, which would be conducted by the city of Agora Hills. With that, what's before you tonight is a resolution granting authority to the city of Agora Hills to serve as lead agency in creation of the Conejo Valley Tourism Improvement District. This was a broad overview, but we have a number of folks with us here in the audience. Jill Letterer, President and CEO of the Greater Conejo Valley Chamber of Commerce; Nathan Hamburger, Assistant City Manager with the city of Agora Hills; Lorena Parker from Civitas Advisors, who are the statewide experts in this arena; Kristin Davis, the current Chair of the Board for the Chamber of Commerce; and a number of representatives from local lodging providers that are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Are there any questions of Mr. Powers regarding this district formation, proposed district formation? Okay, I do have a question from Mr. Powers. I was wondering about the budget, $450,000. What would that entail? What sort of responsibilities would that cover?
I think Jill Letterer or Lorena Parker would probably be best to answer that, but in going back through the benefits, there's obviously a marketing and promotional component to that. It would create a new division at the Chamber of Commerce, which would be responsible for managing tourism efforts across the Conejo Valley, and they would be answering to not only the cities, but more importantly, to the local lodging providers that are assessing themselves to fund this district.
And if the city of Westlake Village had participated, what would the amount have been?
The estimate that we have, and these are rough estimates, is about 500,000 total.
Okay. Then the other question I have is, the city of Agora Hills, they want to be the lead agency, we want to make sure that they have all the support staff necessary to conduct this?
The city of Agora Hills has been great partners from the beginning in this. They've really been a driver in moving this forward, and we feel very comfortable and confident in our continued working relationship in that regard.
From which city is the bulk of that money coming from, or would it be coming from if the dollar were to be collected?
I believe it's the city of Thousand Oaks, but seeing nods that that's correct, yes.
Okay. And any reason why the city of Thousand Oaks would not be the lead agency to do this?
It's my understanding that the lead agency is simply a formality. One agency has to be selected to help move things forward. Once the district is established, it's governed by the steering committee, and there's equal representation on that.
Now, the city of Westlake Village has two, at least one high-profile hotel, and they have chosen not to participate at this time. What would it entail if they were to change their mind in a year or so from now, and what would Agora Hills and Thousand Oaks have to do to accommodate Westlake Village?
I'd probably ask our partner from Civitas to respond to that, and to give you kind of an idea of how we would go about amending that boundary.
Good evening. If you could just state your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Lorena Parker with Civitas Advisors. And to answer the question in terms of what would it entail for Westlake Village to be a part of this, once the formation is complete, in order for Westlake Village to be included, they would actually need to, from a legal standpoint, go through the same formation process of forming a separate district. However, they would also name the Greater Conejo Valley Chamber of Commerce to be the Owners Association. So from the outside and the marketing standpoint, it would look like a cohesive unit, even though there would be two separate entities, two separate districts until the formation, until the renewal, and then they can renew unified altogether.
Thank you. Mr. Price.
Thank you. My question has to do with who makes a determination whether or not the city becomes involved. I think clearly here it's the city staff that has made that recommendation, but there must be some buy-in from the lodging community as well. And I'm just wondering if in the city of Westlake Village, whether they were, the lodging entities there were given the opportunity to voice an opinion there. Do you know anybody?
I can speak to that. There's been extensive outreach that's been done with our local lodging providers, and many of them have been the drivers in moving this forward. And Jill Letterer has done a lot of outreach and continues to do a lot of outreach with them. The city of Westlake Village lodging groups were involved in that. And I can't speak specifically for Westlake, but I can say that they have some competing interests right now that they're working through, and I think there's a desire perhaps down the road to join the district, but at this time, they're going to remain on the sidelines.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no any questions, let me see. We do have speaker cards. Okay. That would be Mr. Nathan Hamburger, followed by Jill Letterer and Billy Martin. Good evening. And Mr. Hamburger is the Assistant Manager at Agora Hills.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, just real briefly in here, support. We've been working very long with the wonderful staff at the city of Thousand Oaks and the lodging industry representatives, as well as the Greater Conejo Valley Chamber of Commerce. We're extremely excited to move forward with this and to build off past collaborative efforts that we've had at such events as the Amgen Tour to California, which is a great success throughout the Conejo Valley. So I'll keep it brief. I know you have plenty of things to review tonight, but I just wanted to be here in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Jill Letterer, followed by Billy Martin.
Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña, city council members, city staff. I'd also like to introduce one of our other partners who's with us tonight, Matthew Madura from Pepperdine University, who will be a partner in the sports commission component of the T-Bid. On behalf of all of us, I want to start by thanking the city of Thousand Oaks for having the vision to partner with our outstanding neighbors to address an area of economic outreach that has long been talked about in this community, but is just now hopefully coming to fruition. The purpose of a T-Bid is to provide funding for the marketing and promotion of our local hotels at no cost to the hotels, city, or our residents. There are over 71 T-Bids surrounding us region-wide, currently putting our hotels at a competitive disadvantage, being without this extra layer of marketing that reaches out to potential guests, group sales, conference holders, sports enthusiasts of every level, and other low-impact, high-value travelers looking for a terrific hub in which to lodge. The metrics of a T-Bid are not in doubt, as recent studies have shown that for every $1 spent on tourism, the return is over $70, up from last year's studies, which showed a $63 multiplier in return. For an area like ours, which has had no organized tourism, one can deduce that the results might be greater. In any case, the T-Bid gives us an opportunity to measure that over the next five years, which is the first term of any T-Bid. It bears noting that of existing T-Bids, not one has failed to renew after the first five-year term, and some have chosen to increase the assessment to their guests because the results have been indisputable. The T-Bid will charge each guest a most conservative $1 per room night, and most travelers are used to seeing these fees at the bottom of their folios. Most T-Bids are significantly more, but this is a good conservative place for our group to start. This funding will be governed by a hotel board, made up of the hotel general managers and owners, possibly with... and owners, possibly with city representation and peripheral businesses. We've also established partnerships with Pepperdine University for the Sports Commission, Caneo Wreckon Park, Cal Lutheran, and the National Park Service. This group will create a modern strategic marketing plan that will include best practices from other T-Bids, including a website, regional tourism guide, outreach to travel magazines, staff presence at travel shows, partnership with Visit California, fam tours of our many assets, including our theaters and ecotourism opportunities, and outreach to organizations to put on events, such as the highly successful collaboration for the Amgen Tour of California led by this city, and to partner with them to hold the events we want and bring them here, and to produce them as well if needed. Because we have a pristine canvas here on which to write an invitation from the Canejo Valley Hotels, our message to put more heads in Canejo beds will be consistent, branded, and ongoing, because the funding will not be in doubt. Few options in economic development are pure win-win, but this is one of them. Already prosperous communities that never before looked to destination marketing as a significant economic driver now recognize that tourism provides a path to their target visitors, in our case, leisure, family, and business travelers, without endangering the quality of life that makes our city such a draw for professionals and their families. And because this is the Canejo Valley, we hope to do it at least a little bit better, and thank you for the little bit of extra time.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Mrs. Letterer? None? Okay. Our last speaker, Billy Martin.
Hello. My name is Billy Martin, and I am the original Thousand Oaks lover. I am currently on the Board of the Thousand Oaks Business Roundtable. I am here to implore you to deny approval of the proposed Canejo Valley Tourism Improvement District Initiative for further consideration and presentation of more advantageous alternatives. The city of Westlake Village has already passed on this for no doubt many good reasons. In fact, I think it would make more sense to join forces with them, since we are already kind of co-joined at the lake. But join Agora Hills? I'm sorry. Agora Hills is not Thousand Oaks. Does New York join Newark in tourism efforts? I have been a strong advocate of building Thousand Oaks Tourism and Marketing, and I believe it is a mission better handled right here from our town. I also believe a large part of tourists for Thousand Oaks are our very own residents. Consider the growing staycation concept with the escalating rise in travel cost. The capacity for tourism at Thousand Oaks is great, and in fact, Agora Hills is our biggest competitor for such. Consider that a visitor is coming to the Canejo Valley. They have a choice of the Agora Hills Sheraton in Los Angeles County, or the Hyatt in the city of Westlake Village, or, excuse me, in the city of Thousand Oaks, which is going to be far greater reward for the city's events, restaurants, and shopping. The bottom line is this: we have a nasty habit around here of sending our work in dollars out of town. When it concerns us, I think we can do it ourselves. The basis for this proposal was a tourism survey. It was done in Woodland Hills at considerable cost to us. Maybe that money was well-spent in terms of research. Now, we are going to Agora Hills to promote Thousand Oaks. Who's going to do the promo and creative work, the media buying and placement, the strategic planning? Remember the city logo development rewind a few years ago? We were going to send $90,000 to Tennessee for a logo and image campaign? We're now sending $30,000 Attitude Survey to Encinitas now? Granted, that may be not a conflict of interest, might be the way to go. But it's happening too often. Have we really considered the alternatives, like promoting ourselves, buy ourselves? What is best for our businesses? Please, for this evening at least, postpone approval of this initiative, as Westlake Village has already done, and think of what will best benefit the residents and businesses. I conclude saying tourism is a fabulous idea. How about a Thousand Oaks Tourism Improvement District? Anyway, thanks.
Thank you. All right. Does council have any questions for staff? Mr. Powers, would you be able to address some of the concerns that were raised by the last speaker?
I would only say that from the work that we've done, and when you look at many of these districts that have been established statewide, many of them are multi-jurisdictional. And the reason for that is you're able to leverage a broader area and bring in additional dollars that can assist in the promotion efforts. And tourism is one of those things where it doesn't necessarily pay off to be insular. And in this case, we've partnered with Agora Hills and Westlake Village, for instance, in doing the Amgen Tour of California. That gives us the ability to spread out the workload and to spread out the benefit amongst the Canejo Valley as a whole. So it's our feeling that working in a partnership type of situation only helps to strengthen relations across the region.
Thank you. All right. Any additional comments? None? Then I am looking for a vote regarding the T-Bid. I mean, not for a vote, but a motion first. Mr. Price.
I'd be happy to make the motion. I think that this is, I'm trying to remember, last year, I attended a League of California Cities Dinner, Channel County's Dinner, up in Tascadero, where the idea of these T-Bids was floated, and it was put on by Visit California, I think is the name of the organization. And I think it's a good idea. I think it can only benefit the businesses here, and I think it can only benefit the residents as well. So with that, I would support staff's recommendation.
Comments regarding the motion? No? I will support the motion, because I think it's worthwhile looking at this to see if it works. It's five years, and if it is successful, obviously, we will renew it. If it's a total failure, we won't. So, but I'm sure that it's not going to happen. Anyhow, we will, I'm sure, be in good hands with the city of Agora Hills, as well as the chamber. Please vote. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Item 10, which is Committee, Commission's Board Reports, and, oh, we do have 9B. Okay. I was jumping ahead. 9B. It is, it's dealing with affordable housing, and this particular case will be presented to us by John Prescott, Community Development Director. Good evening, Mr. Prescott.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The issue before the council tonight is a proposed First Amendment to an owner-participation agreement that the city has as housing successor to the former Thousand Oaks Redevelopment Agency with the, excuse me, the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura. And that owner-participation agreement relates to an affordable housing project on Los Feliz Drive. By way of background, in 2006 and 2007, the former redevelopment agency loaned the Area Housing Authority a total of about $6 million to acquire 2.2 acres of land, do demolition and relocation and site preparation for a 60-unit affordable housing project that the city approved in 2009. In 2010, the former redevelopment agency entered the current owner-participation agreement to require the construction of that project, subject to various terms and conditions and a schedule. In last year, in order to compete effectively for the other financing that's required for affordable housing, principally tax credit financing, the Area Housing Authority chose to split the project into two phases and to reduce the size from 30, from 60 to 56 units. And that modification was approved by the city late last year. Also last year, the Housing Authority did receive the tax credit financing, and there is a condition on that, that they must begin that first phase by April of this year. So they're ready to go, they've got the lender lined up, and the owner-participation agreement needs to be amended, which is our agreement with the Housing Authority, basically to reflect the different project size and the phasing of the project, and also the fact that the city is now the party to the agreement, rather than the former redevelopment agency. So the agreement that you have before you tonight, the First Amendment, provides all of those factors. The project phasing now would be, first phase commencing by April 30th of this year, and be completed by next February, roughly a year from now. The second phase would be required to start by around the same time, February of 2014. That gives the Housing Authority a couple of years, or a couple of cycles, to compete for tax credit financing for the, for the second phase. And, you know, if the stars align, it can all be seamless and essentially be constructed as a single-phase project, but it's just not practical to finance it that way right now. So that's another reason the amendment to the owner-participation agreement's required. So it's our recommendation that the city council approve the changes to the owner-participation agreement. The Housing Authority has approved and signed the agreement, and the tax credit lender, Bank of America, has also been involved in the review of the agreement, and they have approved it. And the financing escrow for that loan, that tax credit loan to come in, is hopefully going to close in early March, so this would be the time to get this in place, which is needed in order that that escrow can close. And on behalf of answering your questions, I also have Chris Norman, the Assistant City Attorney, who worked closely on this agreement and all of the other documents that are going to be needed for the loan closing. And I know Doug Tapking, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority, is in the audience as well and can speak.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Mr. Adams?
Thank you. No additional city financial contribution to the project. Just so I understand, then, the city will now take the place of the redevelopment agency as the owner, in the owner-participation agreement, and the $5 million that was mentioned in the staff report for land, and the $650,000 for redevelopment costs, that has been redevelopment money that we've been allowed to retain?
Actually, the city took over...
Oh, to be spending already.
No, in February of last year, when the redevelopment agency was dissolved, the city had the option to step in as the housing successor, and we exercised that option at that time. So basically, we have been the party to the agreement all along. This is just changing the paperwork to reflect that, because it was an agreement entered by the former agency. But the money, the $5.9 million, was lent to the, to the Area Housing Authority back in 2006 and 2007. What we will be able to, and it's going to get paid back, and that money will come into our housing trust fund as the housing successor to the redevelopment agency. The predevelopment loan will be paid back, the $650,000, I think it is, basically in two phases, as the two phases of the project are completed, and permanent financing is set in place for those two phases. And then the big, the big number, the $5.9 million, is now, through this amendment to the owner-participation agreement, being converted to what's called a residual receipts loan. And that will be paid back, probably a long time from now, but payments can start to dribble in. It's a typical way to help finance affordable housing projects. Residual receipts means that after, basically, all of the operating costs of the project have been paid, if there's any money left over on an annual basis, a portion of that can be used to repay the public agency that helped kind of kickstart the project, as we did here with this particular project. So, you know, that money, you know, long-term, I think will be paid back and earn interest as well. And that also will go to our housing trust fund. So it's money that was really spent and committed before redevelopment agencies were dissolved.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. It's already been lent, it's not in jeopardy.
It's not part of the bank account that they're emptying.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions from Mr. Prescott? None? Okay. Since Mr. Norman is here, just wanted to find out if there is, there is no additional sort of exposure to the city in changing the documents or adjusting them.
No, not really. It's the city steps into the shoes of the former redevelopment agency, and have the right to collect back the loan through the residual receipt payments. But there's no other liability for the city on this. We would sit as a second trustee holder, so the permanent financing would have first right, if there was, something were to happen to the project, and the bank would have to foreclose on it. But that's, that's highly unlikely.
All right. Well, any other comments? None? Okay, we do have a speaker here, Mr. Douglas Tapking of the Area Housing Authority. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Douglas Tapking. I'm the Executive Director for the Area Housing Authority, County Venture. Again, we are your housing authority. Thank you for the opportunity to be here again tonight. This is the next step in the process for us to move forward with this development. And my purpose here is simply to say, let's move forward with this, please. Thank you for all of your help up to this particular point. We're really excited to get it to this stage. Two other things I'd like to point out to you at this point. The two staff members that are working here, both Chris and John, have worked diligently over the past several months to make this a fruition, working very closely with my staff members, Michael and I, and Bud McGee. And the reason I bring this to your attention is due to some retirements that occurred last year, we all of a sudden had a void. And Chris and John stepped in and took the bull by the horns to work carefully with this. And as I'm sure they would tell you offline, many times working with the lenders, the bank, and the state, it's not the simplest thing to get done. So we wanted to commend them publicly tonight and bring it to your attention in the process of making this move forward. We're really excited to get this moving. We expect to break ground sometime in April. I guess we expect this to be 14 to 16 months to complete. Our application for Phase 2 is due March the 4th. It is in process. We are told it's going to be an intensely competitive process this time, so we are working hard to make that a reality. I'm here to answer questions. My staff are here to answer questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tapking. No questions? All righty. Okay, do I hear a motion? Mr. Price?
Yes, I would move staff's recommendations, one and two.
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. And now we go to item 10A, and that will be presented by Harry Selvin of the Cultural Affairs Commission. And it is regarding mural designs for the Civic Arts Plaza parking structure. Good evening, Mr. Selvin.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, city council members and staff. This is an update on the mural project. While I am bringing you up to date, we have arranged to have the murals shown on television so you can view the various pieces of art that we have selected. In response to a call for artists to propose artworks to be painted on the various interior walls of the Civic Arts Plaza parking structure, 54 proposals were received on October 16th. These proposals were from a total of 29 artists or groups of artists. Some artists proposed as many as six different works and submitted to the subcommittee's consideration. On October 25th, the subcommittee met to consider the artwork. Each member of the subcommittee graded each work on a scale of 1 to 10 individually, without knowledge of the artist or each other's feelings. Afterwards, the scores were averaged, and the committee looked at the previous work and supporting information to confirm their grading and recommended a total of 21 works of art by 13 different artists, and the Cultural Affairs Commission approved. The works were all approved by the commission, and these works are now submitted to the council for their approval. These works, which are approved by the council, will then be forwarded to the Alliance for the Arts. The Alliance will work to match donors with the artwork that donors wish to underwrite. As donors are matched to the artwork, the actual paintings of the art in the parking structure will begin. Donors in support of the murals will generate money to support the activities of the Alliance for the Arts, Cultural Affairs Commission, as well as to maintain murals and continue the mural program. Frankly, basically, simply, it's a win-win. Frankly, basically, simply, it's a win-win type of situation. We will benefit the parking structure, the artists get paid, the people will benefit by enjoying an art-decorated parking structure, and again, I think it's a win-win-win, no cost to the city, and I submit this for your approval. Any questions?
Those, how many are there? 35 murals?
There are 20, 21-
21.
-that were approved of 54.
Interesting. Thank you so much, Mr. Selvin. Mr. Fox?
Yeah, just one question, Mr. Selvin. What took you so long?
I'm sorry?
Just one question. What took you so long? Why the delay?
Well, it's been, well, you know as well as I, it's been about 12, 14, 15 years in, in bringing it to this stage. Frankly, we had really wanted to do a lot more, but this is the tip of the iceberg, so to speak. Frankly, we feel when we get started with this and get it off to a good start, there are other projects in and around the property that could use murals and dressing up and such, and we'll be coming back to you.
Okay, very good. You guys did a nice job, by the way. Great pick.
Thank you.
Councilmember Irwin.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Harry, thank you for your perseverance. I look at those pictures, and it is going to be very cool to have those in the parking structure.
It's just damn stubbornness, that's all my part.
So now we're waiting on the donors. Are we getting any of them lined up already?
Well, this will go to the Alliance, and they will look for donors. Unfortunately, we're not in the best economic situation today, as we were years back, but we have designated spots, and we have designated artwork to go on certain spots, selection, of course, and now they've got to go out and sell it.
Excellent. Can't wait.
And money will go, not only to the Alliance and the Cultural Affairs, but visual arts as well. So it's going to get spread around.
Mr. Selvin, how much was, is this expected to cost? Values will range from $5,000 to $25,000?
Well, give me a moment here. These, these were put together by committee, and we think this is going to fly. We're going to give it a try. And again, the big murals, we're going to do the large murals, small murals, we're going to try to do a couple panels, and the various sizes denote the cost to the donor or sponsor, if you will. For example, we have here designated, the artist will receive about 25%. The Alliance, if they were to sell, or the Visual Arts Committee members were to sell, they would get 20%, or 25%, sorry. There'll be 5% to go in for maintenance, and the program administrator, who will pick this up, that's another 20, which totals out to 100%. It's a good program. I think it will sustain itself, and I think we'll do a nice job to beautify the structure. I proposed this for the Amundson people downtown, probably 12 years ago, and they moved ahead with it, and every year, they put up their, they have a youth concert, and they put up their posters, and they put it up full-size, which I submitted pictures of this to the council a few years back when we started proposing this. And it's just a great job, and it's terrific, and again, I look for your approval.
All right. I think we do have questions. Mr. Adam.
Well, I just want to thank you, Harry. 25 years you've been at this, at least, and your contributions to the arts have been phenomenal. Civic, the Alliance for the Arts, the Board of Governors, you and I served on that together for years.
You and I were born on it years ago.
The Cultural Affairs Commission. The only thing missing is, I think there should be a mural of you playing drums with the Harry Selvin Orchestra. Can you get that up there?
Well, I'll do my best.
Okay, Harry. Thank you very much.
All right.
Mr. Price?
The only thing I would like to do is say thank you for being stubborn, sticking to it.
My pleasure.
All right. Before we take a vote, I just looked at the list of artists' names, and there is a name on there that I recognize. It's a friend of mine. I had no idea that that particular person was even in the running. I just found out 20 seconds ago.
Well, good.
So I want to disclose that for the record.
When we, when we looked at the artwork, we didn't have any names or any artists, so we would not be influenced. We just graded the artwork as quote "artwork" without knowing who submitted it, or, in fact, some of them submitted several pieces, and that was good. I'm glad to see the participation.
I'm glad it worked out. That's wonderful. All right. Do I have a motion?
I move that-
Mr. Adam?
Yeah, thank you. I move that we approve the mural proposals for installation in Civic Arts Plaza parking structure.
Please vote. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Selvin. All right. We are now going to City Manager, Mr. Scott Mitnick, on any follow-up items or upcoming issues.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, no additional follow-up comments heard tonight. We will, we will, though, reach out to those who spoke on the Edison undergrounding, or, excuse me, the Presidential Substation Project, including the undergrounding request. And we will also provide information on the city's website, so those who are interested can continue to track it. As we did here, the New West Symphony has a concert series this weekend, including Saturday night here in the Cavalry Theater. Information's on the city website and the New West Symphony website. And as a reminder, to plug the Meet the Artist program that takes place in the council chambers on Thursday at 10:00 a.m., the public, members of the council, city employees are encouraged to attend. You can't beat the price, there is no charge. In addition, this Sunday, council, our resident photographer, Ed Lawrence, will be giving a talk from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Thousand Oaks Central Library, and he'll be giving a sort of pictorial history of the Cano Valley, going back to the mid-to-late 1950s. If you haven't been to this council, you're strongly encouraged to go. It really is fascinating, and Mr. Lawrence is an outstanding storyteller, and it's a rare opportunity. So again, information will be on the city's website, library website, that type of thing. Next city council meeting is scheduled for March 5th. That'll be the annual City Council Goal Setting Workshop. That's it. Thank you very much.
And that meeting will be held in the Founder's Room?
That's correct.
Not televised? So if you would like to know how the council reaches its goals and vision for the city, please go to the Founder's Room on March 5th at 6:00. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mitnick, and we will have a closed session, and go ahead and announce those, please, Mrs. Noonan.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two closed sessions tonight. The first one is conference with real property negotiators regarding property APN 5250053115, located at 401 Hillcrest Drive in Thousand Oaks. The city negotiators are John Adams, Finance Director, Elizabeth Perez, Facilities Manager, and Patrick Hee, her Assistant City Attorney. The negotiating party is Linda Luong, the Area Manager and Contracting Officer for the State of California. Under negotiation will be the price in terms of lease pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Second closed session matter is conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9b1. Tenant National Park Service has alleged that it suffered damages by rain event beginning on October 5th, 2011, while a contractor for the city was constructing a solar panel system and refurbishing the roof of the building, tenant lease located at 401 West Hillcrest Drive. It is not likely that I will have anything to report following these closed session matters.
Thank you, Ms. Noonan. And before we adjourn, we would like to announce the passing of Michael Skey, longtime resident and husband of COSCA Board of Directors Chair Rory Skey. We are adjourning tonight, tonight's meeting in memory of Edward Michael Skey, known as Mike to family and friends. Mike is the husband, as I mentioned, of Rory Skey, Chair of the COSCA Board of Directors. He was born in Santa Monica on June 9th, 1946, and his family settled in Thousand Oaks in 1959. He was part of Thousand Oaks High School's very first graduating class in 1964. He went on to earn an Electrical Engineering degree from the University of California, Berkeley, and has had a master's from CSUN. He later joined his father in running their own company, Tempton Engineering, until he retired in 2011. Mike is remembered for his dedication to family and for his service to the community, and on behalf of the entire city council, we send our thoughts and condolences to Rory and the entire Skey family. We are adjourned until March 5th at the Civic Arts Plaza Founder's Room. Good night.